There's Pam.
I don't see Pam.
She's still muted. But I see her at the bottom.
All right, she is unmuted now.
Hey Pam.
All right. Hey guys, how are y'all?
Hi Pam.
Hello Pam.
Oh, Miss Gabe. It's so good to see your face, Gabe.
It's great to see you all. I just wish you could be the same way.
I haven't shaved. I don't have razors.
Oh, there's Posh.
Yes, it's me. How are you?
I'm doing well. How are you doing, sir?
I'm well, man. Thank you.
Good. Has everybody in their families been staying well?
In my case, yes.
On outside, we're out.
Yes, thank you Pam. Thank you.
Other than talking to the squirrels, I guess I'm doing all right.
No joke.
Well, they make a pill for that, Mr. Gabe. And assure you of that.
Yeah, I've got a niece and a nephew that live in New York and unfortunately, they've been hit with COVID-19. So they're in the hospital. They're living in the Bronx.
Oh, well, we'll lift them up in prayer for sure.
Yes, talked to my uncle last night. He said they're doing well. That was to be expected, so.
Okay, Mr. Neal, I show five o'clock.
Yes, absolutely.
Good evening. My name's Les Leinberger, Executive Director of Communications for Nacogdoches ISD. This is a special meeting of the NISD Board of Trustees conducted online through the Zoom app. The meeting is being recorded and will be shared afterwards on the district YouTube account. I will now turn this over to NISD School Board President GW Neal. Mr. Neal, it's all yours.
Thank you. Good evening. I hereby call this regular meeting of the Nacogdoches ISD Board of Trustees by video conference to order. A quorum of the following board members present. President GW Neal. Vice President James Montoya. Secretary Dr. Tyrell Gromon. Pastor James Irvin. Ms. Pam Fitch. Ms. Sheena Ma, Ms. Mindy Winslow. On March the 16th, Governor Greg Abbott granted a request by Attorney General Ken Paxton to temporarily suspend a limited number of meetings laws to extend the necessary telephonic video conference meetings in response to the coronavirus COVID-19. In accordance with those suspended rules, we certify the following. Notice of this meeting has been posted online for at least 72 hours. Although members of the board are not gathering in a central fiscal location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference or telephone call. We are meeting by use of Zoom software application which allows two-way communication for members of the public. As we would any interpersonal meeting, members of the public who have followed the instructions on the meeting notice for registering to speak during the public comment portion will be up immediately for three minutes to speak. If like the vast comment of each meeting conducted by video conference or telephone call, please follow instructions on the meeting notice. All other meeting procedures will adhere to the board adopted procedures to the extent practical. An audio recording of this meeting is being made will be available to the public at a later date. This Zoom software application allows for people to view and interact. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties as for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. If you have any questions about these suspended laws, please call also the Attorney General at 888-672-6787 or by email. Thank you. Public comment, we do not have, we do not, we do not receive any requests to address the board tonight as outlined in the meeting notice. We have one item on the agenda, tonight's agenda. Mrs. Kay Douglas with Tasby Texas Association School Boards Leadership Services will be leading our team of eighteen, team of eighteen building training this evening. And we certainly want to welcome Mrs. Douglas in just a minute. I want to thank the board for their work and especially for the team of eight. We're board members of team of seven with superintendent, a team of eight, and will follow us together, a team of one. At this time, before we turn it over to Ms. Douglas, I'm going to ask our superintendent, Dr. Tyrell Hill, if he would like to have a few comments. Dr. Tyrell?
Well, thank you so much. It's great to be here with this amazing board. And I'm so thankful, Kay, for you coming in and working with us to really solidify this team of one that we have with eight wonderful souls that are here, but one vision and one mission. So I just want to say thank you so much to you and Tasby for providing this service and opportunity for us to sharpen the saw. Thank you so much, President Neal.
Thank you, sir. And again, we're excited that Mrs. Kay Douglas is with us. She's joined us before with tremendous training. And so, Ms. Douglas, we're going to turn it over to you and thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you for having me. I want you to know I dressed up for this because when you work from home every day, you just don't have to dress up. I was impressed. So just a couple of ground rules. If for any reason you get kicked off, because I've done so many of these lately and sometimes I get kicked off, just jump back in as soon as you can and we'll just tap dance till you get back. It generally works better if you're not speaking, if you can mute your mic just because if there's background noise or any of that, that won't be picked up. Please remember that you are on video, so anything you do will be on video. And I understand it's recorded, so it will be held on forever. We are going to have bio breaks. Just because we're all at home doesn't mean our bladder's got, you know, infinitely bigger. So at the hour, on the hour, at six o'clock, we'll have a five-minute break. At seven o'clock, we'll have a five-minute break. And I know if I tell you five, you'll be back in seven. But I'm trying to get you accustomed to that. You may have heard my cat. That's my coworker, my co-presenter, who may feel like he needs to talk in the middle of this. So, and I want you to understand that even though we're not in the same space, the rules don't change with me. This is a conversation. This is not a PowerPoint. This is not, you know, death by PowerPoint. This is a conversation. And I want to start off by asking you who you're sharing your space with, because we are all in captivity and sequester and quarantine and lockdown, whatever it is, vacation, whatever you're calling it. But if you want to, who are you sharing it with? And I'll start. I am sharing it with my nine-year-old grandson, whom I finally get to homeschool after all these years of wanting to. God knowingly knows what I was thinking. My hat is off to teachers because I've learned so much about what they do that I didn't know how to do. And my cat, who may come in at any second. So who wants to go next?
I'll go next. I'm sharing my space with my wife, which I don't even see her very much because she's always over here in the office doing her classes online. So I don't see her very much. We also have my dog Abby and my dog Bambi. And they have loved the fact that we're at home now because they're spoiled rotten.
I love it. Okay, who next?
I go ahead and say, I am here by myself. Nobody around. At home is me, my TV and internet.
Okay. I have a cat who could come and share your space if you like.
If it was a dog, I would have to have one.
Ah-ha. Okay, who next? Oh, don't make me call on you.
Okay, I'll go. This is Mindy. I'm still considered a essential employee, so I am still working. But we do have limited contact at home and we don't go anywhere on weekends. So I'm sharing my space with my husband and two dogs and one of my college kids who got trapped here.
Ooh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And she's feeling trapped.
Oh. Okay, who next?
Well, I'm sharing my space at home with my wife and I'm learning how to cook. Oh, good.
I call that the Corona Cooking Academy, so that's good. Okay, who next? Don't make me call on you.
I'll go. I'll go. I'm sharing my space with Alicia. And we have plenty of projects around the house. We haven't run out of anything. We don't, we're not bored ever.
Wow. Okay. I love it. Who next?
I believe that.
Okay, who hasn't spoken?
Mr. Neal.
Hey, just one quick word. Pam just messaged me and it seems like Les has her muted and she can't unmute.
Oh.
So now I'm out. Sorry.
How much does she have to pay to get unmuted?
I don't know. I'll ask. I'll charge her. Tell me.
Or how much did she pay to get muted? I can beat that. Dr. Trujillo?
He's muted also, and so is Mr. Neal.
Okay, now, they may have muted themselves at my suggestions, but they have to unmute.
There you go. I think we muted, but then when we mute, we can't get back in to unmute.
Well, then don't mute. Don't mute them.
Okay.
You gotta give feedback.
President Neal, what were you going to say?
Okay.
Something I didn't want to interrupt.
Yes, Kay, I am sharing my space with my first wife of 41 years. And I've learned so much about dusting and cleaning and cooking how it should be done. It's just, I'm ready to go back to work or do something.
Yeah.
Well, I will, I will tell you, I've been sharing my space with the highway 175.
Really?
Yes.
Going back and forth?
Between here and Dallas, so.
Okay.
And here, I enjoy the driving around and visiting and seeing the great staff. I've spent a lot of time watching our staff do some amazing things. And I'm here, just like Coach Jafir, I'm by myself, so. For shit, I'm here by myself as well, so if the internet is up, it's good. DirecTV is there as well. But Zoom is my other partner that I've been trying to break up with a little bit, but we've become very, very accustomed to one another. And, but then I share my space back at home with U-Haul boxes and boxes being packed up and my wife packing things up and that honey-do list that President Neal's talking about. And then, so it's exciting times for us. And so, that's where I'm sharing my space right now.
Oh, wow, that's a lot of space to be sharing.
Yes.
Well, I'm sharing, I'm sharing space with the husband and our two little dogs and trying to keep tabs on my daughter who's out in California and making sure that she's getting the supplies she needs out there.
Yes. It is more difficult long distance.
Yeah.
It is.
Okay, Dr. Trujillo, you gave a great lead-in to telling us, and not just to you, but telling me the good stuff that's happening. Because we'll get to the challenges in a minute, but just tell me the great stuff that's happening in Nacogdoches ISD.
The great thing that's happening in Nacogdoches ISD is that amazing group of people that when we, when the governor and we shut everything down, these folks did not stop showing up. And when I've gone to the different feeding sites and I've watched from a distance or I've come up and seen the great smiles from nutrition services, it's just amazing. The big smiles that they give and they're sharing our facility folks, they're mowing, they're doing everything. It's just almost as if the kids have disappeared and, but we're preparing and maintaining and doing everything. The construction sites, oh my goodness. Just, my heart palpitates and gets excited whenever I go over to see the dirt being moved and the concrete being poured and the sounds of construction. I put a video together and I intentionally picked the spot because it was just bustling with great sounds of life. And that's what we need. Our folks need to hear that just because you're within the four walls of your home, life is going to get better and we're going to get back to the enormity of things. And we're doing amazing things to prepare ourselves to get back to that enormity. So that's what's exciting right now is seeing all the great folks that are doing the wonderful things in preparation for that day whenever our kids bring our buildings back to life.
Now, everybody else already knows. What's the construction? What are you building? What are you doing?
Well, there's the bus barn where we park the buses and all of that going through. That's amazing. I got to walk a building that will be the new administration building. And oh my goodness, bringing life into that area there is going to be a tremendous piece for the district. There's a lot of things that are occurring that we may not even know. They're happening on the roofs of building with HVACs, getting things ready for new systems. And then we have our brand-new elementary school right across the street from one of our middle schools doing a great job just breaking earth and going forward with that. It's just exciting to see life go on. So whenever I'm not sitting down in front of Zoom, I get in my truck and I go out and just look at the amazing things that this board and this community has put together way before I got here. And this community voted this in and we're being very responsible getting everything moving forward so that when the kids come back, we're ready.
Wow. Okay, the rest of you fill in. What else exciting is happening? And not just in the school district. What is exciting you about your community? What's going on?
I'll go ahead and say that. Community is totally supporting us due to leadership of Mr. Fraley. Trujillo is continuing the same style. And the community trusts us more and they believe in us and give us an opportunity to do what we can to do, what we can do with total trust.
Awesome. Who else?
I also think that I need to share with the fact that this community has really come together during this coronavirus to feed our people that don't have food. My wife is on the board of Hope. They gave out 500 boxes yesterday of food. People that came through lines and the military guys from Tyler came and helped them deliver those boxes to the cars and stuff. Our, you know, our community, our kids, you know, a lot of our kids that go to school, their parents come and get brought food also. It's just, it's really good to see our community pulling together so that people aren't going without it.
Yeah. Who else? That's awesome. Who else wants to share something?
Kay, this is GW Neal.
Okay.
Kay, this is GW Neal. I want to share that this board had the most amazing superintendent, Dr. Trujillo. The short time he's been here, he has been absolutely fantastic. And his vision, his excitement about kids, you know, I'm just almost too old, but I'm excited. His focus is unbelievable. I am also excited that this community, Mr. Fraley helped us create a vision for the district. And that has been carried over to our city council, to our community here. The community members saying, we can create a vision by working together for the best for this community. There's so much excitement going on. I'm excited about the future for this community.
Wow. Okay, who else? What else?
Can I let the cat out of a bag? I know something the board's going to be approving, not this year, this month, the next month. Over at East Texas Lee Container, today I had the privilege of going over there and I talked to President Neal about this this morning. Matter of fact, I was sitting in their parking lot when I was talking to President Neal, waiting for this. Steve Barnhart, the folks there at East Texas Lee Container have donated funds for Nacogdoches ISD. And so, the amount will be, will come to the board, but it's a significant amount that goes to support and they believing in NISD. So we were pleased to go up there today to collect a significant donation to the school district. So that was exciting, coming in as a new superintendent and seeing one of our community folks, a business, inviting us to come over. Of course, we had all our masks on.
Of course.
And all of that. But I told him it was so hard not to reach across and give him a big old handshake and a bear hug on behalf of our students and staff for the gift that they've given Nacogdoches ISD. So I don't want to let the cat out of the bag too bad, but that's a great thing, good thing from the community today that it was just myself and Lisa there, but I felt the presence of every individual in the school district there today because he was reaching out to the school district and saying that he knew that we needed those resources to support what we're doing. So it's exciting.
Wow. That says trust. That says we support your vision. That is amazing. Okay, who else? What else?
Dr. G, I wanted to talk about Mayor Brophy and Judge Sowell making the decisions that serve our city well. And of course, we have Dr. Gordon at SFA and Dr. Trujillo for the school district. We still are seeking a city manager, so that's one need that we do have. But there's been a big concern, I agree with Mr. Montoya, big concern about people having food. And our school district has adjusted very well to that of trying buses and trying all different ways to get the food to the people, but we have to do it in a safe way. So we are overexcited about trying new things and there's a new thing that's going on. Adopt a Senior, kind of a way to celebrate the seniors 2020 for Nacogdoches Dragons. But all the area schools are doing this. So that's going to be on tonight at K T R E. I think it'll be on at six and 10. So Ms. Holland, who was Teacher of the Year for the state of Texas in two different career development. She was named as Teacher of the Year. Anyway, she dreamed this up with some other people. And so she's going to be interviewed. So that's some of the good things that are going. There are so many good things. We could just talk the whole night just about good things. That's wonderful.
Well, and it's important because each one of you knows a piece of this. I don't know any of it, but there are people in your community who will watch this, who will need to know those things. But I got to ask a question. Tell me about Adopt a Senior.
Well, basically, they put seniors up and list a little bit about what their interests are and such as that. There's, actually, it was interesting. I was looking at it this afternoon. There's a young lady that was named all district and all regional from Central Heights. And my attention was drawn to her because she's going to go to ETBU to play softball. I'm on the board there. But you read about all these seniors and their varied activities. And basically, you just adopt them. And so my wife and I adopted a cosentology student. And we haven't, we just started our initial contact with her. But there's still plenty of kids to adopt, so if anybody wants to adopt Adopt a Senior 2020 from any of the school districts, Tatum Center, all over Nacogdoches County, Woden. So anyway, very exciting. And I think this is something to honor seniors. It's never been done before, so.
Yeah.
I'm not sure how else to tell you to look for it, but probably it'll be in the paper. It is on Facebook under Ms. Holland's name.
Okay. Well, that is exciting. What else? Who else?
Ms. Kay, I just wanted to say, three years ago, I sat in on some training with you and several of us sat in on some training under some really different circumstances. And if we look back at what we've been through, it's been an amazing transformation for this board, for this community. And for me personally, because I just think that, man, we've come a long way, a long way. And we've got a long way to go. We've done well, but we're going to even do better. And I just wanted to say that Mr. Trujillo had me at hello when I first met him, so.
I'm going to ask you about that in a little bit, so hold on to that. Yeah. Anybody else? What is exciting that's going on right now? Because we're going to spend some time talking about what the challenges are, so. What else?
If I could just add that Dr. Trujillo mentioned the work that's going on around the district. Even though our schools have been closed, our students are still engaged in rigorous learning. Some by way of media and the other, the teachers are providing packets that parents can go by and pick up from the different campuses. And the kids are able to go home and still complete their assignments. So even though the doors are shut, learning is still taking place. And I thought that was awesome.
That is awesome.
I would definitely the fact that our teachers and our administrators and our students have shown the flexibility and perseverance to transition and literally overnight go to this online format. It's amazing. So proud of them.
Right. That is huge, because you prepare for things, but you don't know what you're preparing for. But when you have those things in place to where people can transition that easily, that smoothly, that's huge. Because we are in a time we've never seen before. I mean, we've seen hurricanes, we've seen fires, we've seen everything, but we have never seen this in a sense that we can't actually physically get to people anymore. So that is amazing. What else? Before we move on to challenges, what else is exciting that's happening in your town, in your city, in your district?
I think I'm the only one that hasn't talked yet. I kind of have been wrapped up in my world of healthcare, to be quite honest with you. So in the community is an outpouring of just love and care for those who are disrupted. You know, I see the teachers and the workers that were handing out food and preparing the packets. And I see the parents driving up, you know, sometimes their car loaded. And they get out, they go get their stuff, they get back in the car. So there's a determination there for parents to take care and make sure their kids are doing what they're supposed to be doing. Oh, friends who are teachers who are checking on their parents, not just their kids, but the parents. Because the parents are teaching maybe a class for the very first time of their own kid. Sometimes we don't necessarily, they don't listen to us as parents. They really don't think that we know very much. I'll be really honest. My college still doesn't think I know anything. So there's that. And then, just the community in general. I know from at the hospital, the businesses are giving food to our workers. Churches are, they're having prayer meetings in our parking lots. I just got brought a handful of gift cards from our church to give out to some of the employees who have been furloughed. Because we just went through the hospital across town and us just furloughed a bunch of people. And it's just devastating to do at this time. And so when I see the love from people, they put things behind and they come in and they say, what can I do to help? I mean, I called, you know, we needed masks for our non-clinical workers. And I called, the best people are the dancers because they sew. And so I called the team director and I said, Ms. Fuller, we need masks. And I knew that her mother-in-law made masks, our assistant principal, Kristen Heath, made masks. And they just brought these loads of home-sewn masks to our front desk and dropped them. You know, it was just a gift of themselves. When you see people giving it themselves, sometimes outside of what they do in their normal lives, it's pretty incredible.
It is. I have been so impressed from, and Facebook is where I get all my important information, of teachers doing drive-bys to check on their kids and the way people have been Zooming. And I have to tell you, I'm sort of suffering from Zoomophobia because I've done Zoom, I've done Skype, I've done GoToThis. But just seeing how people, how creative people have become at keeping those ties. Because we're going to talk in a minute about challenges. Now, I'm an introvert. I know you don't believe that, but I really am. So I am in hermit heaven. I am perfectly fine. I've worked from home for 16 years, so it doesn't look much different. But for people who are not introverts, who are ambiverts or extroverts, this is hard. But for people who are not introverts, who are ambiverts or extroverts, this is hard. Because I have I have a sister who goes to walk her dog just so she can speak to everybody in the neighborhood and you can hear her on the phone, hey, so and so, how are you doing? So we're gonna talk about the the um the challenges, but every um difficult situation always brings out the best. You know, thing, people that you didn't, I mean, you knew you could count on them, but when you really have to count on them and they come through like that, or they come through, or the people who are employees, who are continuing to show up, who are continuing to do above and beyond, it just warms my heart. So before we go on to challenges, do we have any more of those that we want to share, personal, professional district? Where people are just going the extra mile?
I would say, you know.
Dr. G, I wanted to say something.
I don't know who's talking.
It's okay.
Oh, no, I was gonna say the about the work that kids are doing. You know, when you take a drive through our campuses and you see the signal, you see the the newspaper stands. I'm gonna tell you that, just that device by itself, for our classroom teachers and our administrators to be able to put the hands, put our parents in the hands of a packet, that the weather, the rain, everything keeps it protected. That was gonna be a challenge and how do we get that package to our families that have no service, no internet? And you go to the campuses and you drive through and you see it at the high school, you see seven, eight, nine, ten of them. You go to the middle schools and you see them lined up and strategically. I'm gonna tell you, that just gives you chills up and down your spine because the work that's inside those stands were put together by our amazing teachers. But without having a partner out there in the community to say, we've got a device that you can put these packets in to hand it to your parents, I'm gonna tell you, hands down, that is amazing to be able to go through and see something like that. Because the teachers, we were putting it together, coming up with ideas, how do we get this in the hands of our family? And in a way that it keeps them safe and it keeps us safe. And so I I will tell you, that's that, just when you drive by and you see that, it's just amazing to see that that partnership that we have here at Nacogdoches is also with the the media that's constantly, you know, they're throwing them under the bus and saying this, well, you know what, the media here has come in and provided us with an opportunity to put things in there and get it to the hands of our parents. And I'm gonna tell you that that's been, uh it's a great appreciation for uh for for that. When you drive by our schools and you see that.
Okay, Dr. G, uh I wanted to say something about administrators and teachers. I think what before they gave, you know, the the required hours and more, but now their the accessibility and their mind never turns off. They're basically into teaching twenty-four hours a day. They're always thinking, what can I do? How can I do it better? Uh and and they're zooming and and checking on their students and doing very personal things. And sometimes uh even delivering food to their homes. So I haven't heard a lot, but what I have heard has been really exquisite of not going the extra miles, going the extra five miles for our students. And then the students, they're they're engaged. They they wanna be doing this. They they are, you don't have to chase them down. They wanna be in in a learning environment and learning from their teachers. So that bond has not been broken. It's been stretched, but it's not been broken. And that's because of the quality of teachers and their commitment and accessibility.
Anyone else before we start talking about challenges? And don't leave here and say I didn't let you talk.
You think we're all too shy.
Oh, yeah, I've noticed how shy y'all all are. But anyway, but but anytime, we'll start talking about challenges. But when something comes to your mind, just say, hold up, wait a minute, I have another thing I wanna crow about or brag about. Because yeah, my mind doesn't always work at the same way at the same time. But before we go to challenges, I have a question I was gonna ask later on, but a couple of you have mentioned it, so I wanna ask you. And I always ask everybody who gets a new superintendent, how did you know that Dr. Trujillo was the one? And I heard somebody say he had me at hello. So I just want, and Dr. Trujillo, you can turn off your your sound so you don't get a big head if you don't want to hear this. But I'm asking the rest of the team, how'd you know?
If I can use biblical terms.
You may.
He stood head and shoulder above all other candidates.
Okay, do you want to elaborate?
It was, it was really almost just a no-brainer. I think it was a unanimous decision. You know, after he came, I mean, I think virtually everybody's mind was just, he's the one.
If there was such a thing as it, he had it.
Can you elaborate on what it is? And you may not be able to.
You cannot put the finger on it. It's just a gut feeling that he's a right person, the way he presented himself. Very organized, very informative, everything to the nth degree analyzed. He impressed us. At the same time, three of our colleagues, most inquisitive people, went to his campus and came back with the flying color. Even though if they didn't have to, we were convinced, but it did put ice on the cake.
Go ahead. Could I add another thing to what I was saying? The other candidates that we have viewed, they talked about their experience. They talked about themselves, but Dr. Trujillo, he came in with data and he talked about Nacogdoches Independent School District. And that just done it for me. He showed us where our where our problems was, were and talked about the solutions to the problem. Uh every area that we have talked about is to uh problem areas or challenges for our district, he addressed them with data. And that just done it for me.
Yeah, I will say, when he opened up the envelope and handed us our district reports and our numbers and explained to us and then had a plan for it, knew what, where he wanted to start and where he wanted to be. He our, he knew our district when he sat down in that chair, um because he he cared to there were some people who were from here and who knew us because of experience, but he knew us because he took the time to learn us. So he read about us, he studied us, he knew where our strengths were, he knew where our weaknesses were. He watched board meetings, he knew how we interacted. I mean, he called us on some things. I mean, you know, if he's gonna tell you, you know, you're out of your lane, then he's gonna be straight with you and he's gonna tell you where you belong. And I think that that's that's the leader.
Kay, yeah, Kay needs to be unmuted.
Can we get to less? Uh Gabe?
Hello?
Okay, I won't touch that again. I'm so sorry. You don't have to be bright to have this job.
For me, I'm gonna say this in Spanish and I'll translate it, but for me Gabriel came del corazón, del mente, y de sinceridad. He came from his heart, from his mind, his sincerity. Because I saw that, like I say, I saw that the minute I met him. He was not here to BS us. He was here to say, I want this job because I know I can do this job for you guys and we're together, we're gonna get to where we need to get. That's what, for me, that's what, I mean, it was just, there was other good candidates, but he, I mean, he rose above the rest. He just rose above the rest.
And I'm so excited. I actually knew what you were saying in Spanish, but go ahead.
I have two schools of thought that I would like to share. Um and that is, you know, first, first off, you know, it was his passion and his heart and his obvious uh love for students that that really grabbed me. But the process in itself was very interesting too and and had an impact on me because it was really easy to get from fifty-one to six. But taking those final six down to three was even harder. And then taking that final three down to one is uh extremely hard, especially when you've got such a dedicated group of people here that are putting their heart and soul into this. And I can honestly tell you, we turned every stone and asked every question. And to see this board completely unify behind this man was it gives me chills just thinking about it. And it was an incredible experience and I have no doubt in my heart that he is the the man uh to lead us and that uh God brought him to Nacogdoches.
Ms. Kay? I think we overlooked probably the most important thing and that was his resume.
That little thing.
I thought you were gonna say something about football.
I wanna talk about a couple of things that stood still out to me. You know, uh uh you know, let me talk about a couple of character traits. I think he has an unbelievable way of building relationships with people. And it's all impacted this group, this team. He was able to do that. And as we made that site visit, it's very obvious. His ability and skill to build relationships. And this could be important in our community here, to build relationships with our community, to reach out to our community. He has some skills. We heard a lot about his ability to care about kids. Now, his main interest of being in those classrooms, being up and down the halls, building relationships with those kids. That was exciting to me. So he did his best paperwork at the end of the day. He always started in the classroom and then I'm building, touching base with kids. And then uh several said, well, a listener, you know, Gabe listened to, he's a listener. And he's a learner. He takes part in training with staff and, you know, as a campus principal, I realized how important it was years ago trying to be a campus principal, how important it was for for the principal to take that lead. If I'm gonna ask my teachers to do it, I will be the first one to know it also. So when my parents walk in, I can stand firm and say, this is what we're doing, how we're doing it. And so he has so many attributes. These are just some of the ones that, and and they just, you know, uh affirm that and 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 on the site visit. It was just unbelievable. Not one person, as I think Pam may have mentioned, we tried our best to find some fault. Something wrong. As a matter of fact, one district even said, we let him slip away. We should have kept him. So I I'm still upset by our district. Well, we're smiling because he's a Nacogdoches. And so uh his commitment is to Nacogdoches, we're excited.
Okay, I've heard some good things. Now I'm going to turn the tables. Dr. Trujillo?
Yes, ma'am.
How did you know? And reason I go through this is because this is the honeymoon period. And we know that there's gonna be some things that happen and we wanna make sure we establish why it was important. But why did you wanna come to Nacogdoches? Why was this the place for you?
Well, I I'm looking for the position, looking for the job and looking for the opportunity. I always viewed it as kind of like whenever I go to find my coat, I I just don't wanna look in the mirror and say, boy, this coat looks good. I also wanna be able to be inside the coat and say, boy, it feels really good inside. And uh that just looks good. A lot of, a lot of times we we move to things because it looks good. And and then we suffer because it it's very uncomfortable, but boy, we look good to everybody else. I I will tell you, uh I had the opportunity to visit with this board uh several times. When they came to the district and I saw the vision and what they're looking for, and I just got excited because I was thinking, wow, they want this. And so uh and then when I sat down with them here, uh we had real talk and they allowed me to have real talk. Uh and I I walked away that evening or drove away that evening and it was a pretty long drive because I kept thinking to myself, oh, man, did I mess up? But you know what I kept thinking to myself is if the good Lord, and I'm use reverence a point, and I don't mean to offend anybody. But if the good Lord is gonna make it happen, there ain't nothing gonna stop it from happening. And the key is that uh visiting with this board and seeing how how unified they are, the passion they have for each other. Uh and you can see that, you can see the humor. They, you know, it's it's time to to let let your hair down a little bit, but then it's time for business. And when we got to the business uh conversation of it, uh it it was, it was uh, you know, it wasn't just sit and get. It was, tell me how you got these numbers. And uh and and we got to the numbers, where would it dig and do that? And when I was going through that process with this board and listening to all of them, uh as we all interacted with each other, it was almost as if I found that suit coat and I put it on and I'm thinking to myself, boy, it looks good in the mirror, but man, it feels good. It feels good on. And that's, that's what I love, uh that opportunity. And uh Mr. Neil, he brought it up. I I've I've interviewed a few places because you know, you do, you look because you feel like you're ready, but you know what? I wasn't ready. The man upstairs, when I sat down, he said, now you're ready. And he put all the pieces together and here we are. And that's what I'm excited about, uh that opportunity uh to do, to to be here with Nacogdoches and this wonderful community.
And let me say, Nacogdoches, if you had fifty-one good qualified folks to pick from, that some says something about you. It says something about the work that's gone into this. It says something about the district. I hear Dr. Trujillo talking about the vision and having a unified set of people. That means so much. That means you did the groundwork to be ready for this opportunity on both sides. So that's exciting to me.
Can I ask you a question?
Certainly.
When you got the news that NISD had heard Gabe, what was your impression?
Let me just say, I can't tell you what will be a good fit for you. Even though I've seen y'all on 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 other occasions, you had a year of growth between then and now. And just to see, because I could see the trajectory last time I saw you. But what I tell people is you can have a great board and you can have a great superintendent. When you get the right board with the right superintendent, it's magical. Because you can have a great unified board that doesn't work well with this superintendent, or you can have a great superintendent that doesn't work well with the board. So for me, I am excited that you used your process, that you set your vision, that you did your homework and you made a decision. It's, it's not for me to have an opinion. I just love the fact that I'm hearing you say, we're unified. I'm hearing you say, the community trusts us. I'm hearing you say that Dr. Fraley, you know, led us through a process that brought us here. That's what excites me. Because again, it's not looking from the outside and does it look good? It sounds good. It sounds like it is good for you. So that that excites me. I'm, I'm always quietly cheering for you. And I have to tell you, I have, I have lots of children, so I have some problem children that that I can't always cheer for all the time. But when you find your way, when you become not just seven different people, but an actual team that's using all of everybody's expertise, I'm excited for you. So.
Can I add something? One thing that this board, my board here, and I'm gonna call them my board now. My board, my board needs to know this. The greatest decision they made was to go with Mr. Marshall with regards to the search. I will tell you, he knows this area, he knows the community, he knows the need. And I will tell you that uh there's many districts out there that they go out there and they find a search firm. But when you find a search, somebody who's not connected, somebody who's not invested into the community, and they are, there's a lot of great firms. But I will tell you that Mr. Marshall, uh that was the first conversation I ever had about Nacogdoches. And so for 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 he to have a conversation with me and 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 in the initial launch, I will tell you that decision months ago uh was amazing because he was a a cheer, a big cheerleader for Nacogdoches and and he was wanting the best for it as well. But I will also say this, and I will not sell Alton Fraley short, his his leadership coming in and and myself coming in at the wake and being able to take this to the next level, I will tell you, that's another wonderful decision this board has done together. Uh so it's just a domino of number of things that this this board is thinking about the kids in this community, that's teachers in this community and its leaders. And and so a lot of wonderful things have just perfectly put themselves in place so that we can And, and so, uh, a lot of wonderful things have just perfectly put themselves in place so that we can launch and do amazing things together.
Yes. I, I totally agree with that.
One more thing, uh.
Okay.
One more thing, uh, Dr. G. This was a puzzle. The puzzle is, we had our community, we had our administrators, our teachers, our parents, and they said, this is what we want. So this is what the piece looks like for our puzzle, that wants to fit right into Nacogdoches. Now, my honorable colleague, Coach, and his aphorisms, he, he said, well, we, we want to be honest. We might not be able to get all these things that you asked us to, but we'll do our very best. And, and Coach, he does more than his best. He's near perfect. But, um, when we interviewed, uh, Dr. Trujillo. You, it's like you just put the piece on there and it just goes right in. This, this is perfect. It's just like, that's, that's it. That's it. We know. It's, it's, we had other, other people to compare to, even on paper. He, he fit. And then in person, he fit. And then I'm still trying to figure out if we went four, four and a half or five hours in the second interview. And that, that tells you the conversation that we had and, and the fit. And part of this, all this coming about is the, uh, individuals in the community and all the people that participated in letting us know, this is what we want. And we went for what they wanted and what we wanted too.
Yes.
So he is the, he's the rompecabezas, he's the pieza, he's the piece that fits in the, the, the puzzle.
I love it. I bet he's never described, been described that way before. Somebody else was saying something.
Kate, GW, I want to add something that Gabe said about Dr. Rusty Marshall and also. They accepted ownership in our district. They said, this is, you know, this is important to us. We are both SFA graduates, this is our community. And they stayed with us through the process. There are times along the way, I'm sure they want to stretch our neck, you know, tighten us, you know? But they stayed through the process and that's, that's the pastor, everyone trust the process through the entire, remind us of it. And they were just amazing how they held our hands and walked us through and stayed with us all the way. Those two guys are amazing and, uh, really appreciate and also what they did in the community here, also building relationships with community members and getting input from the community. They were amazing. And finally, my only, who'd have thought, Pam, one morning, Monday morning, one Monday morning, a phone call to a resident and Katie will make all the difference in the vision.
Isn't that right?
Mr. Fraley again for that, that one phone call turned us around. It turned, it's unbelievable. Uh, we, we have a lot to owe to him, please, uh, help enough to become a team of one.
But I know from working with him and talking to him, how important it was for him to come home. And to be able to do something in his hometown, which sounds like this, this has been a whole, as they said, a puzzle piece, dominos. Of just making the right decision and the right decision and the right decision. And I think the biggest thing you all have said are relationships. That you listen to the community, you listen to yourselves, you did your research, but, but now that Dr. Trujillo has taken over from Dr. Fraley and he's, he's continuing those relationships. And that's what makes the difference. So I am, I am so excited for all of you. But I have to say this before, we, we're gonna take a break and then we'll come back and do challenges. But it's not hard during the honeymoon period to be excited and to be, you know? And the beauty is, or I guess the, the, the biggest test was coming in the middle of COVID and, and being able to successfully navigate that.
I was about to say, can you really say that this is a honeymoon?
Well, it's, it's, it's something. I don't know if honeymoon is the right, it's the right, you're right. It's probably not the right analogy. But even after COVID, and I know there will be an after COVID, there's gonna be a time when Dr. Trujillo makes a decision that everybody doesn't think is a great decision, or that the board makes a decision that everybody does not think is the best decision. So the question is, when you're out in the community and they say, what is that new guy you hired doing? Are you gonna say exactly what we hired him to do? Or are you gonna go, I don't know, beats me? So it's, 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 how are we going to continue? Because one of the things I heard you say about your search guys is that they stuck with you through thick and thin and, and times where they probably wanted to wring your neck. So what we're gonna talk about when we come back are the challenges and how we keep this momentum going, how we keep this trust going, how we keep this relationship going when it's not all as rosy as it is during COVID. Yeah, that does just sound crazy. Okay, anything else on that before we take a seven minute break? I'm gonna tell you five, but I know you'll be back in seven.
If we mute our mics, do we, are we gonna be cut off?
Can, can we please ask if we can mute and come and be cut?
I will, I will mute everyone and then when we're ready to come back, I will unmute you guys.
So we don't have to touch them?
That's right.
Okay.
So you're not?
Thank you.
If I'm gonna be recording personal conversations?
You can either have those or you can't.
No, I don't, I don't want to record.
I'm getting ready to mute everybody. So, uh, here we go.
Have, have you turned off our video too?
Um, that's a good question. Yes, I will do that as well.
Okay.
How'd you get on it?
He'll put you back on. He just like, he, it does, there was a click.
No, my face.
Oh.
Mr. Matoya, you there?
I'm here. Are you there?
He is.
You know, a while ago you spoke in Spanish, but you forgot to translate one word.
Which one was that?
I thought, I think that was the word, uh, BS. You, you never did translate that one. BS? I don't think there's a translation for that in Spanish.
Oh, okay, okay.
I'm sure there is.
I found a meaning, I found a new meaning to the word beans. Man, can I fix beans every which way you can imagine?
Exactly. Okay, before we start talking about challenges to the district, I would like to ask each of you, what is your biggest challenge during this period personally?
Wow.
What's the hardest part?
The hardest part for me is not being able to hug people, talk to people, contact with people. I'm a people person. I do, I'm, I'm, I can tell you, I've been talking to the squirrels and they don't answer me, so.
I hear you. Who next?
Human contact, man, it's, it's digging his soul for sure.
Is Pam there? I don't see Pam.
Yep, I'm here. I, I was just thinking about that, Kate. I, I think for me, of course, you know, I, I own a couple of businesses in the community. And my biggest struggle has just been, uh, worried about my, my folks, my, my employees, my team. And how they're doing and, uh, how their families are doing and, and we're not all together right now and, and that makes it doubly hard, but, uh, it, it, you know, we're just one big extended family and it's, it's rough.
I hear you. Who next?
I go ahead. I have a sister in Canada and you're a diabetic, had amputated leg in February. Unfortunately, I could not go to visit and see how everything works.
Yeah. That's hard.
But we communicate pretty often, trying to be encouraging.
Yeah.
Well, for, for me, it's been pretty much shut down at the church and that's been very difficult. We, um, implemented a, a drive-in worship. Of course, we were only able to do it a couple of times because of the weather. But the disconnect between the parishioners, it's been very hard.
Yeah. I hear you. Who else? What's the hardest part of this for you personally?
Kate, this GW, I guess my biggest challenge has been thinking about family, making sure that, you know, are we doing all those things we need to be doing to stay safe? Think about my church, think about the man that I worked with on the Bible study that, um, it, it's unbelievable to think about. Yeah, it, it's been a challenge for me to, to keep that. You know, uh, if you don't mind me saying this, the faith, the commitment, I realize that there's one person in charge of everything.
Yes.
And that it was gonna be okay, we're gonna be fine. But I should want to help sometime. And so I know that doesn't mean anything, you know, but he's in charge and, and I know that we're gonna be okay. And my challenge is that, you know, be okay.
Yes. And to remind people that we're gonna be okay. I hear you. Who else? What's the hardest part about this for you personally?
You know, initially when this started, I'm kind of an introvert too. Sitting in my house is, I'm perfectly okay with that. But I have had a hard time doing it on somebody else's terms than mine. I miss my parents. I have seen them and gosh, I, I don't even know how long, like, um, six weeks. And they live up there basically, uh, making sure they have simple things like their medicine and their toilet paper. My grandchildren live about 40 minutes away. I can't see them. Our stepdaughter's wedding Saturday. I have a new grandbaby on the way and I haven't seen anything other than just pictures, you know, in so long. And it's, it's that disconnection that e- even though I'm, I'm not such a e- even though I'm, I'm not such an outgoing person, I, I miss touching the people that I love, and, and that's hard, I have another child that's just across town who is extremely ill and in the hospital when this all went down, and the day I took her home was the day they implemented no visitors. God, I'm fixing to cry, and I got to thinking what it must be like to know that your loved one is in there and you can't touch him. And our nurses have a hard time nursing and not being able to touch, because part of nursing, part of getting well is that interaction, it's that, it's, it's, you know, family involvement, the reason we have visitors is because that promotes healing.
Yes.
Connection, and so not having that makes it so much harder on people to heal, and it's hard, that watching families separated at the door is hard, so those are, it's that connection and that human touch that even people like me miss.
Yeah, I hear you, who have we not heard from?
Dr. G, okay, so the biggest challenge is for my wife is me, because she stuck with me. So, I love being with her, but, you remember, I, I started this off about projects, we'll see, for me, the biggest challenge is, okay, I need to go to this store and that store and that store to get all the stuff to do my projects, so, then you just have to do your projects the way, what you, with what you got.
Right.
And not go, because you can't go to all those places all, all the time you want, so, and, and that, I think that kinda leads into the other thing where, that figures with other people, you know, I volunteer at schools, and I miss not being at those schools, not doing the, the volunteer things that I do, and, and the children, and if I miss them, I'm only with them just a, that little bit, those teachers, the, the, you know, what a challenge for them, so, there are, we have many challenges, including what we have in our diet, and by the way, we just had chalupas for dinner with the, with beans. Mr. Montoya, they were very good.
Yeah. Like Mindy, my, my nephew was supposed to get married on Good Friday in North Carolina, and needless to say, we did not travel to North Carolina for that, but they did get married, and we talked about how this isn't really a honeymoon for y'all, well, they're actually in two separate states, they had to go back to their respective homes to do what they needed to do, so I think for me, the biggest part is having my family be disconnected at a time where we really, really meant to be connected. Okay, so we're gonna spend some time talking about the challenge for the district, for the city, for the state, whatever, what challenges are we facing right now?
It's a long list.
I know, I got, I got a lot of ink in my pen.
Well, I would, I would say that one of the biggest challenges is we, we, we have all the great leaders that are making decisions and, and looking at the, the various levels of businesses and getting back to school and everything, but the one thing that, that radiates to my core is until we can feel comfortable that our teachers will be safe, that our principals can be safe, that our kids can be safe, we, I don't see us going back to normal until we get our kids back in school. When we get back our kids back in school, then our families will go back to work, they'll be able to do their regular shopping, their regular lives, and I think the, the big catapult is when these small little wonderful hearts of kids come back to our schools and they're safe, and they feel safe, and they're not, I, I think about the psychosocial side of these kids, what's, what's going on with them? They don't all live in a home like what I was raised in, and they don't live in a lot of homes that we all are thinking about that we see on TV. Some of them might be left alone to supervise each other, and so, the challenge is, is how as a district, when we get the kids back into school, learning is gonna be and always been our number one job, but if the kid's heart and their mind and everything is not sound, and we've gotta get that in the right place, because this has traumatized a lot of our young kids, they don't understand why they can't go see grandma or grandpa, they don't understand why we can't go to Burger King to go get a burger, they, they can't understand why we can't go to the playground, and here we are as a school, we're gonna get our teachers back, and we're gonna have reading, math, arithmetic, we're gonna have all the content, but we also have the psychosocial side of it, so we've gotta, we've gotta acclimate that and, and make sure our kids know that the new normal is being careful with each other, being careful about this illness here, so that, that's, that's gonna be the big challenge that I see as a, as a school, as a district, is taking care of the hearts and minds of, of our young kiddos, but also our teachers. That's the big thing right now, I, I sent a letter out to our staff only and told them, thank you so much for taking care and checking in on each other, because we're, we're busy doing the work, but they've gotta be able to, to listen to that little nuance to their friend that teaches next door, how are they feeling, is there something in their life that's traumatizing them, a loved one that's gotten sick or something, but then they're still teaching, they're still doing the amazing things that we have, so, it's just multifaceted, just like Ms. Spencer's saying, it's so many levels, but the one thing that I will tell you is, I interviewed with this board, I came in, we had great data, we looked at student performance, we looked at financials, but the one thing that God, once again, COVID-19 hadn't even struck yet, and then all of a sudden I came on board and COVID-19 was here, well, you know what, finance records, five-year projection, all that data and all that stuff has to go to the side, and, and I'll show you a picture if I can, because this is what it's about right here, this is a group of ladies, I hope you can see it.
Yes.
That's our nutrition system.
Yes, sir.
And I went over there in that parking lot, and I had a group of ladies, and all they do is spoke Spanish, and I'll, if you don't, if you'll mind for just a second, I still superintendent, hurry, hurry, here's the superintendent, come immediately, and all they're agreed with is a big hand that goes outside my truck, that says, wait, stop. Not because I'm sick, but they might be sick, and what does that do with our kids? Whenever we have to stop a kid, I'll put our arm out and say, wait a minute, you can't do this, you can't hug, so, that's, that's, that's the part that, I thank the good Lord that the board and myself came together, because this is what we need in our transition back, is thinking about the hearts and minds and the social, emotional sides of our kids and our families and our teachers, so that we can get back to what our business is about, and we can't jump into reading, math, science, social studies and all of that, we gotta go and reset all of our psychosocial as well.
Yeah, no, I couldn't agree with you more, it's, it's almost a paradigm shift, it's, it's no different from, you know, when I talk to one of my employees or check in on them, I'm not asking them about this or that piece of work, I'm asking them, how are you and what do you need, and that's the same with our kids, and our teachers, you know, how are you and what do you need, that's what's.
Wow.
Dr. G, one of, one of the things that we're facing as a challenge is our, the dragon graduations, our promotions for many, but this is a culmination of, of close to a year's work, and the, the kids are accustomed to moving, moving up the ladder and, and having that reinforcement of, I've achieved this, I've achieved this, and that becomes the climax for the seniors, this is, they, they leave on a day that they didn't know that was their last day at school, and so there's a great loss for them, and especially for their parents, and then also for the teachers and for us, you know, if, if they're hurting, we're hurting too, and so, we'll be working on that, I'm sure, because Dr. Teju, he's, he's got, he's planning ahead, and so, we're, we're ready to follow him, and try, try our best to honor all, all the people that are involved in these, in these ceremonies that might have to be altered for safety's sake, and, but that still means that we can honor them in whatever way we can, and let them walk away with, with that, knowing they did their best, we did our best for them, and thank goodness, many of them will be moving along to the military or to more training, more education, and that's, that's our purpose, and we wanna serve our purpose, not only for those leaving, but for those moving up and those coming in, the new ones.
Yeah, now, you know, I, I worry, it feels to me almost like we're experiencing a, a bit of a paradigm shift, and, you know, I worry about those high school students that maybe they were already kind of on the border of doing well and just barely hanging in there, and have we just lost them, or they're gonna come back? There's just so many questions yet to be answered and, and a daunting time.
It is.
Kay, this GW, I, I worry about the challenge for this school board, that there are so many distractions. We need to maintain that vision, that, we have a vision for students and the decisions, that vision that we've created as one, a team of one, and there are so many distractions out there that are gonna come our way, that we have to challenge, we have to encourage each other along the way, to keep our focus with our superintendent, our district, I think Kay mentioned earlier, say, what are you gonna do when that parent say to you, why did you all do this, and we got to keep that, I think it's gonna be a challenge to maintain that, that focus, and we have to reach deep down inside and support each other, and, and maintain that challenge for our students, because there are a lot of distractions, I can't even begin to tell you about the distractions, as, as you know, and our number one thing is, was, was best for our students.
I hear you. Dr. T, go ahead.
I'm sorry, I was gonna say, and then amidst all this COVID stuff, amidst the transition to, you know, a new superintendent, then we can't forget, we still have a seventy-eight million dollar bond going on.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. Do you want to say more about that, or can you?
Oh, well, you know, I, it's a hard one, I was, I was already, you know, have a lot of concerns about making sure that, that we stay on target and, and don't get distracted and, and are accountable to what we told the community and what the community voted to do with the funds, and it, it, and now we, like I said, now we've got COVID on us and what a huge V in the road, Y in the road, that that's taken us, so it's, it's gonna be a challenging year.
And I think that was why it was important for Dr. T that he, he filmed where they were doing construction and where they're doing all the moving, because it's hard enough to keep people abreast of what you're doing and how you're doing it and how it's progressing, so using different means than maybe you would have before, but I hear you. Yeah.
You know, what's interesting is when, and I don't, I, I hear the word challenge, and I changed that to opportunity, because every, it's an opportunity, and I'm gonna tell you, this board, I went back and looked at something, and this may, may help us understand, on November twenty-first, something very important happened here in Nacogdoches, there was a board meeting, and it was almost like this board knew about COVID-19, because what they did was amazing, what they did is take three construction sites and put them down as one so that they could purchase and get all the things, and I've been doing some homework with some of our folks and asking questions, is COVID-19, is it impacting us, what is it gonna do with that? Well, when that decision was made on the twenty-first of November, to package all of those into one, what, what we did is we, in essence, purchased a lot of the materials and a lot of the things so that we can get a good price, and the amazing thing is that we didn't know that, nobody knew this was happening, but it was a tremendous opportunity. Now, we could choose to look at it challenges, but I see it as an opportunity that was, we, we, we were able to take advantage of, and I will tell you, that's why I've been going and asking is, are we on target, are we doing this, are we, because I know that the, the, this board, months ago, whenever this was pushed, pushed forward, we said we were gonna make a commitment to make sure that we were responsible for the revenue and all the things that we made a, a commitment to this community, and I'm gonna tell you, I may not have the kids in the buildings, and I may not have the teachers, but I do have a truck and I do have my driver's license, and I do have a mouth that I could talk from a distance to make sure, are we doing what we said we're going to do with this board, and we put a mask on and we're able to walk, so I will tell you, yeah, there, we're gonna find out some things that might come through, but it's not gonna be because of those three big items that were on the, on the package, that was pretty amazing, on the November twenty-first, when you see that.
I love that, what else, what other opportunities?
Kay, I, I think, I see it as an opportunity, what Dr. Teju was saying in terms of our psychosocial, our psychological wellbeing, of not just the students, the teachers, the administrators, but our entire community, this saying that is occurring has made me realize at my age how vulnerable that I am to whatever is around me. I love this community, I've been here twenty years, this is my home, see the things that I see, it's, it's gonna be a big challenge with our kids, I mean, I, I want our kids and our teachers to feel good inside here, but when you feel like you're being squeezed like this, you can't feel real good. So, yeah, I don't know that it's always ever gonna be normal again, that, the, the opportunity for us is to be able to teach our kids and our teachers and our community to live in a different realm than we before this, and that will be a very, very, very difficult thing to do. But we'll get there, we'll get there, we're gonna get there.
Mr. Montoya, what you, you brought up something, you talked about the new normal that in our past has spoken, I'm sorry, morning was, we haven't, we had normal, and now we have this so-called new normal, but he said we should focus on the fact that now we have change. Maybe we don't even stay in the new normal, maybe we are changed people, we're a changed community, and this opportunity to, you know, take that to the next level, I mean, I don't know what that looks like for us at this point here, but you talk about challenges and opportunity, you've got kids coming back who've been taught the old-school way of doing math, because if I was teaching, I have to do the carry the one, and so, you, you think about all those having to, to come back and kinda relearn how to learn the modern way, there's, there's gonna be some challenges in the classroom, but maybe this is our change, maybe we, maybe that's what, what this is about, I don't know.
There's nothing wrong with change, there's nothing wrong with change, it's how we approach it, and I really feel real strongly because I am part of this board with all of the board members and with Dr. Teju, that we have every opportunity to make an impact on what we do in this community, I, I really feel that in my heart, even with qualities that we're having, we're gonna do it, because that's the kind of people we are, all of us, each one of us on this board, Dr. Teju, that's what we're about, and, and I'll be darned if I'm gonna let something like this make it difficult for our kids to have an opportunity for them to get their education the rest of their years, because it's not be the end of this, you know, we, we may have something else, but you know what, together, we're gonna get wherever we need to get, that's, I believe that, I really believe that, so, but it's hard.
I love you, I had, had the tremendous opportunity to shake every one of this board's hand whenever we had the opportunity to say, you, you're gonna be our next superintendent, I shook your hand, but I will tell you, and I meant everything I did when I shook your hand, but I think we live in an age now that people took for granted that shaking that hand of that person across from you, or that hug that you gave somebody, or those words of encouragement from somebody that you didn't see before, I promise you, this reset, this change that Mindy's talking about, and this whole new normal, what, however we wanna frame it, I think we're gonna hit a reset, and people are gonna come back and be able to do things differently, that handshake is gonna be completely different than it was before, that embrace and that hug to that loved one is gonna mean something different, and that's the amazing thing that's gonna happen, even with Reverend, when they're coming to the church, I mean, coming to church is gonna be completely different, when they, whenever they walk in there and they're sitting together and, and they're listening to the word of God, I, I mean, the amazing things that are gonna happen, the reset, I think it's gonna be a good thing, but we're gonna have to be able to capture that, that momentum and that opportunity. that, that momentum and that opportunity, and take it to a whole different level with our kids and with our staff and with our leaders. So that's, that's what excited, what's going to be exciting whenever we get beyond this particular situation.
I'm going to look at the positive side of it.
Okay, I want that. Go ahead, Faj.
I was going to say, looking at the positive side of things.
Go ahead, Faj.
Not all the time. But I think the good things comes out after everything's settled and everything normal, we become more friendly with each other, we value what we got, we value those so-called first responders' values, their hard work. We respect them a whole lot more, and we try to be more friendly with each other and recognize each other's agonies and happiness.
I hear you.
You know, Kay, I had a question for you.
Okay.
What do you see, you know, this change? And I, I like what Minnie said about change. I mean, you know, I'm thinking about how I've changed and been able to communicate with Zoom. Who would have thought at my maturity that I, and I'm enjoying it?
Yes.
And, and it's not going to be the same. It's not going to be the same as we've done in the past, the way we communicate. I just see a lot of change taking place. Okay, what do you think? I'd like to know your perception of all of this. What, what do you think about the change?
First of all, you should know that I am an eternal optimist about everything. But for the last two years, I have gone up to Chicago in the summer to a social emotional learning conference at my own expense. And what I've talked to them about is how social emotional learning isn't just for kids, it's not just for teachers, it's not just for families, it's also for board members. So for two years, I've been talking about this in another state, you know, far, far away. But what I see happening is just what you're talking about. It's no longer some woo-woo fringe topic that people, you know, some people shied away from. We now realize how important it is at every level. And my boss knows for the last two years, I've been saying, I got to teach this, I got to teach this. When, when we have conferences, when we do this, I have to teach it. And it warms my heart to see that we're now identifying. I mean, that's why I asked you those questions at the beginning of every segment, because this is how we start putting that in. The other thing that I've talked to you for years about is how, how little the community understands what teachers do and appreciates what teachers do. I promise you, after six, seven, eight weeks, however many months this drags into, parents love teachers.
Yes.
The community loves teachers. Teachers love teachers. Because it's one thing, I've got my grandson, he's a nine-year-old fourth grader. He's got one set of homework. If I had three or four grandchildren here, or if I'm a parent and I have three or four kids with, you know, four different levels of education with five different classes, I would be kissing teachers' feet. I would be, you know, so maybe, maybe when we get past the financial part of this, we can actually address those absolute inequities and how we pay teachers versus other folks. So I just see so much good. I mean, tomorrow's Earth Day. I'm an earth kind of person. I love the fact that skies are clearer, that water's clearer. I just, and, 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 and what you were saying about people learning to Zoom, we were having a meeting and people said, oh, you know, board members aren't going to do that. I said, board members are Zooming with their families. They're Zooming at board meetings now. So all of that stuff that we didn't think was going to happen. So I am absolutely excited. Not, it's not that I don't see the hard things that are happening and the heartbreaking things that are happening. But I also know that this is how change happens. And we're not going to go back to, to where we were, because that saying, a mind once expanded can never return to, to the former dimensions. There's so many things we're going to do so much better and that are going to mean so much more to us. So I'm excited.
Dr. G, something that goes with that, we've, we all have learned new dances through our lifetime. But now, we have to create a new dance, because the way we do school is going to be modified. But wait, we have the opportunity to make the dance fit us, where we're at, at each location. And we have a brilliant leader. So I hope you're, you're up to date on your dance lessons there, Dr. Trujillo.
Do you have TikTok? Because there's all new dances with TikTok.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, but I am excited. What else is another opportunity? And I was, I was on a call with some folks that we're going to talk about legislative opportunities. We're going to talk about how the bottom dropping out of the oil field, the oil, you know, means is going to affect the economy in Texas. So there's, what other challenges? Did y'all get muted again?
Community-wide challenges going to be coordinating the return of everything to whatever normal looks like. So we, so you send kids, opening some of these businesses, but there's kids at home that need learning. You, so Wendy, you teaching them, if you start opening the businesses, I think there's a big opportunity here for us to make sure that we coordinate this, you know, kind of resurrection of our town and our county or community or whatever. I think that's going to be a huge challenge.
Yeah.
Well, and I would reiterate what Kay said about the economics. I mean, this is, we're at the beginning of this. This is hitting sales tax, so it's going to hit the city. It's hitting the state, so it's going to hit the public schools. You know, it's hitting universities, it's hitting small businesses, it's hitting every aspect. And it's going to be a huge challenge.
Yeah. And how, how do we prepare for what we don't know is coming?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pray.
You know, we talked about the graduating seniors, and I even was able to put a little message for our seniors, let them know we're thinking about them. And, and our high school principal and Dr. Hill, we're all working less, and then we're all working on trying to get that. But also, it's the little ones, the littles, the, the pre-K, the pre-K teacher. And creating innovative lesson, capturing the attention of those kids, of our young little learners, kindergarten teachers, first grade teachers that are out there that are doing tremendous work. And, and then we've got partnerships with PBS and DEA is doing things with us with all of that. But it's those little ones. And it's not just the academic side, it's how they learn how to get along with each other, how to work in a group, cooperative learning. All of that is, is, is what our pre-K and our K are, are missing right now. Because to, to see a kindergarten teacher or a pre-K teacher begin the year with a non-reader, and then end the year with a reader, you want to see excitement from a teacher. But right now, they don't have that security that the kids are getting the content. And so what are we going to do next year? What are we going to do to, to make sure and ensure ourselves that we can move our kiddos from kindergarten to first grade, and from first grade to second grade, and each one of the grade levels going up? Our middle school kids, one of the most stressful things for an eighth grader right now is they're starting high school in the fall. And they have a little bit of a time to transition. So what's going through their minds? Our fifth graders, you know, going into intermediate, going into middle school. So each one of the grade levels, those are going to be some opportunities that we need to look at and see how we can capture so we can help in the transition of our kids, all the way from our littles at the very beginning, all the way up to our seniors that we have. So that's one of the things that this great team that we have here in Nacogdoches, the, the individuals I work closely with here at the administration building, a fine group of folks. And we're all diving into those conversations with our principals. And our principals are thinking about those things as well. But also, I worry about some of my principals that are here right now, that things are going on in their personal lives that are distracting them from leading the building. And it's not a bad thing, because I want them to be able to take care of themselves and take care of their families, because they're no good to us if they're worried about something or somebody that's in their family that's struggling and they need to provide the support, but they can't be there. And so that's the part that, that tugs at the heartstrings as a leader working in the organization. But I know that we're going to, we're going to be so much better because of it.
You know, that's, that's, I'm sorry, Kay. I was going to say, you know, hearing him speak, it reminds me of, from the get-go on this, I've said, you know, I don't have any fear. And I don't have any fear about, I know it's going to look different, and I know it's going to be hard, and it's going to challenge us to our core. But I'm not fearful because I have so much confidence in this team and this man. And Mr. Trujillo is, is, your presence here has, has given me, for one personally, such a, a peace of mind.
Thank you.
I have to tell y'all, my grandson's nine, he's going to turn 10 in May, and he would be going, he'll be going from fourth grade to fifth grade, which goes into intermediate school here in Huntsville. And we've already planned, we're going to have a little graduation, his birthday service at the same time. My daughter said, oh, we have to have awards. You know, you have to have most improved, and you have to have perfect attendance, and you have to have, and we're just thinking of fun ways to, to just kind of take some of that off, you know, that idea of what, what he's missing. Because it, this is, we, we have to have new traditions, we have to have new rituals. His favorite class, I call my school the Corolla Academy, and he does his, his work. But his favorite class at Corona Academy is Kay's Corona Cooking Class. And what we do, we, we do reading, because he has to read the, read the recipes. We do math, because he's got to, you know, figure out how to measure it all out. We do, we incorporate all of that into it. We, we watch Jeopardy, because that's, you know, part of current events or whatever. But we just have to, to, to figure out, how do we make this less frightening? How do we make it more fun? How do we, how do we, because, because we're teaching them how to deal with adversity. I mean, that's going to be the biggest lesson. And we're not going to do everything right. And I'm not the best teacher, who probably want a different teacher at Corona Academy next year. But, you know, just how do we, how do we help our families? How do we help our, our friends? How do we help our neighbors have some fun?
Mr. Douglas, I think different people have different challenges. And at the end of the day, adversity causes finding a solution.
Yes. I agree. And when I share what I'm going through, which is the other part of social emotional, is because we've made it, we're so independent and we're so competent and we're so, we're afraid to say, I don't know how. We're afraid to say, I, I, I don't, you know, I can't deal with this. So one of the things that I see coming out of it is people are coming back together to say, I'm lost, can you help me? What worked for you? Oh, I never thought about that. Because when, when Dr. Trujillo said newspaper machines, I was like, what is he talking about? And when he said it, I was like, well, duh, I never would have thought of that. But isn't that amazing? That none of us has to have all the answers. But if you have an answer, and I have an answer, and we talk about it, there's, there's no limit to what we can do. So, yeah. So what else? What other challenges? What other opportunities?
Could be an opportunity for us, Kay, is that when I think about mentor teachers and the young teachers that are coming into the profession now, there's so many distractions, and there's so many challenges. Those mentors are going to reach out there, and I think it's going to be critical that we have those to help make a difference for the young ones that come in, so they can stay in this business of education. This, you know, I smile, I talked to my administrators the other day, he said, Ms. Neil, my, my wife, who's a social worker, patrol, social work, patrol officer, maybe, she said, how do you get out of a teacher contract? He said, what are you talking about? As a teacher asks you how to get out of the contract, he says, no, I need to know how to get out of my teacher contract at home.
Oh, right.
It's challenging. It's different. And so I, I guess my, the opportunity is that the, the opportunity for mentor teachers to really help those young beginning teachers and it's a great opportunity for them to learn.
And I think it's going to be reciprocal, though. Because I think the, the brand-new people are bringing things that, that, that experience and seasoned people like, you know, figuring out that we need to use a newspaper machine. I think there's a chance for, for the reciprocity there.
Absolutely.
You know, the things that we've done is, is, and it's exciting to see, is you don't have to be a small local business. We reached out to AT&amp;T here in Nacogdoches. And we, we recognized an opportunity that we were missing, because families were, were not being able to communicate with their schools. You know, there's nobody to answer the phone, and we have, you know, there, there's nobody at the campuses. So the team came up with a tremendous idea. With AT&amp;T, we have an opportunity to provide cellular devices. And we're, we're not in a binding contract with them. It's as long as we need them in order to provide this. And then Mr. Montoya would be excited about this. In the conversations that we had with each other, he said, what about the, the folks that just need to talk to a counselor or a social worker? How do, how do we get our folks being able to get a phone number so they can reach out? Because they're just, they're, they're dealing with four or five kids in the building, in the house, they're dealing with that discipline issue. They need, they need some support. So what's exciting is right now here in Nacogdoches, and when I talk to my partners that are in the same business, they're like, Gabe, you got cellphones? Well, let me call you to see what we could do in our district. We, we got two cellphones for every, every school building. We got it in, in key spots in the district, so that our community can make phone calls and be able to pick up a phone and call and speak to somebody. Was that a challenge? But we, we chose to look at that as an opportunity. And you know what? The worst thing somebody can tell us is no.
Exactly.
The hardest thing we have to do is ask. And, and when, and I'm going to tell you, Michael did a tremendous job as, as going out there and getting this coordinated and getting set up and running with it. And then Les did a great job of communicating and putting it on the web. I'm telling you, this, this team that, that is put together, that's working with me, they're dynamic. And we ought to be proud, because they're, they're, they're as well doing the tremendous work with our principals. Dr. Hill, with the grading policy and being able, the courageous conversations we've had to have with district around us, what are you doing? Oh, that's not going to work here. You, you guys are crazy. No, we can't do that. And then we, so we were arriving to that. And then to Dr. G's point, we're going to wind up with a great graduation for our seniors. We're going to take care of our seniors. We don't know what that is yet. But the good thing is, we got time to figure that out. So that was exciting. AT&amp;T giving us a cellphone, not giving us to it. You know, it's, it's still a little bit of change that we had to pay for it. But it's not, it wasn't something that would break the bank at all for us to provide that service to our families and to our community.
Yeah. I'm just learning all sorts of stuff. Okay, what other opportunities?
We always will be prepared for unknown and unexpected.
And you know, when we get through on the other side of this, we will be so encouraged that whatever the next challenge is, we got this. We, we've been through that. We know how to innovate, we know how to work together, we know how to cooperate. So every time you have adversity, it just gives you courage and hope for the next time. You know, you just, once you get through something, and, and, and which is kind of why the older you get and the more adversity you come through, the stronger you are, because you don't collapse, because you go, oh, yeah, I can eat beans and rice. Yeah, I know how to, you know, eat just what's in the, what's in the cabinet. You know, there are things that you think you can't live without, but then you realize, you either figure out how to make them at home. I learned how to make yogurt in my Instant Pot. I went back to baking bread. I mean, there's just a whole host of things, which is why Corona Academy Cooking Class is really fun. But, you know, all sorts of stuff. But we are going to be stronger at coming out of this, and we're just going to be able to deal with whatever the next thing is. So going to have, we're coming up on another break. I'm going to give you in just, just about nine minutes, so don't, don't give up. But what else? What other challenges will the state be facing?
I think as a school district, another challenge I see, another opportunity, we have a lot of students that have issues with alcohol and drug usage. And at this time, those that are trying to stay clean have no one to turn to. They can get on Zoom and have a meeting or whatever, but not everybody has that opportunity to be able to do that. And I just wish there was some way, because I would love to be able to have some kind of a meeting with kids that maybe want to talk about how they're feeling. Because that helplessness and despair can go a long ways for people to hurt themselves. So I see that, I see that as, as an opportunity for us to be able to reach out to some of those kids and help them if we can. And I particularly think about one of the students that I was working with, it was getting into using drugs. And now that we're, I'm not seeing him, it's just, and I can't reach him, it just kills me. Now that we're, I'm not seeing him, it's just, and I can't reach him, it, it just kills me. It kills me.
Yeah. Excuse me. Unfortunately, we have a lot of young kids with their minimum supervision. Also, they get in trouble as well. I have tendency to get on the internet and look at the website, Nacogdoches, Nacogdoches City has. And I realize, actually, I documented since February until end of the March, there was about 12, 17 years old kid. Were arrested for some reason and that concerned me. It really did. And I'm not sure who I shared that with, but one, I think one of the board members maybe. I said, this is alarming. 17 years old. And it happened because there is no supervision. There are not schools to be in a school. There are not a extracurricular activity to participate in. And they're already on the wrong track. And hopefully we're able to return them back to the right track and supervising them. And these are some negative things that we have to be also aware as well.
Yeah.
Thanks Coach for sharing that.
Well, and even, even kids who are in good homes where their parents are working and they're not there and they have the, the littles. You use that word, that's what I call my grandkids, is the littles, cause they got mad when I called them the babies, but. That's why to change. But I do worry about those kids who are not getting that, you know, education that some parents are able to give them. And that push and that we need to read, we need to read one more book because they're not there, because they're working. And, you know, it's not that they're in trouble, but they're not getting that thing that the littles need. And they have good, you know, somebody watching them and all that, but it's not, they're not getting that teaching. I, I, I am concerned about that.
I, I, I have to go clarify this. Those people that I saw addresses Nacogdoches, however, does not mean they are an ISD student. However, still are human beings and they're too young to get in trouble.
Yeah.
You know, today we had a conversation with the commissioner. And what we've been fortunate with is the commissioner's been very close to, uh, having weekly conversations with the superintendents. Uh, you know, and we start off every single day. And I appreciate, um, Mr. Alvin Freely, he, he included me early on before I even came on board. He said, Gabe, you need, he, he shared the link and when I was able to, to listen in, to be on, get on speed. As soon as I got here, I put our team on it. So our team is listening to it with the commissioner. One thing that we're looking at, and it goes back to what Ms. Finch brought about earlier. And, and it's, I don't want it to, to seem like it's something small, cause it's something massive. Is what's the financial implications down the road with this? Businesses aren't working, tax, uh, the tax revenue's not there. We have, basically, the way that they, they worded is that they're paying you to buy gas now. Uh, so it's just, the key is what's, what is gonna happen down the road? And we have a, a responsibility right now as a district to just watch and be very, very diligent about what our expenditures are. To make sure that, to watch that, because we don't know what that unknown is. And those challenges will hit us next year. Uh, because you're not gonna only have financial implications, but you're gonna also have academic implications for kids that have regressed. And they have something that's called summer regression. Well, this is, this is not even summertime. And we, we're gonna have school year regression along with on top of this regression that's going on. And how do we support our teachers? How do we build the capacity for the teachers to be able to meet those needs of our kids? From pre-K all the way up through high school that are gonna have gaps. So I see that as wonderful opportunities for us to, to embrace and come up. But I will tell you this, one of the things that's exciting is that in this whole situation. There's not a single school district that is operating by themselves. The collaboration that's happening, it's amazing. Here in Region Seven, across Region Service Centers, superintendents from one side of the state of Texas to the other. Uh, Dr. Hill, uh, is here as, in one capacity, but she's talking with individuals and leaders in other districts. So the collaboration is something that is amazing. So we see it as a challenge, but the opportunity is to build those relationships so that we can, uh, develop and meet the challenges together. Cause we're all gonna have to meet the challenges together. There's not gonna be one district hit harder than another. We're all gonna be, the starting line is just all the same place. And for us to hit the ground running, and that's what's exciting for, for myself. And I know for the sport, cause we're gonna do some amazing things. Uh, but those ideas may, may come from within the eight of us, but also may come from one of our board members visiting with another board member. Uh, at one of the board trainings that I have, Dr. G, who has had an opportunity to go off and get some great training. Uh, and, and build a network with some folks across the state of Texas. So his network of folks may be able to, to, to provide us some insight. So that's what's exciting about. But I wanted to really highlight what Pam was talking about, which is the financial side of it. There's some big implications there in, in, in the horizon. We don't even see the light yet for that.
Right.
You know, Gabe, you hit on something else there and that is, you know, this isn't like a hurricane. This isn't.
Right.
Just impacting one location. This, it's, it's statewide, it's nationwide. So I think we can.
Yes.
I hate to say it, I would take confidence in, but to know that this struggle is not ours alone. We're all in this together and we're all in the same place with the same challenges and opportunities.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Thank you.
It is 6:53. We're gonna have our second and final break. Come back at seven and we will finish up.
Ms. Jacobs, can you do me a quick favor? Turn your, stop your video and then see if you can bring it back up.
It played music when she left.
And you, were you able to do that, Dr. Trujillo?
I was, yes sir, I came.
All right, you guys are, you guys can turn your cameras off during the break and then be able to turn them back on. And I'll go ahead and mute everyone, okay?
Okay.
Thank you, Les.
Trust in you. Seven o'clock. I'm back. Who else is back?
I'm back.
Okay.
Back.
I'm back.
Alrighty.
Back.
Okay, we are.
On a personal note, it's good to see you.
It is good to see you as well. Hello there. Okay, my question for our last hour before we get into, cause this is really the transition part. We're gonna spend time talking in this hour about how we make the transition, not just between. You and your new superintendent, but whatever we're calling the new normal, the reset. But I also have to talk to you about, and you'll all recognize this. You know I can't have a conversation without you, without the framework for school board development. And the statute that sets up team building says that at some point during this time, and I always wait till the end. I'm gonna ask you what further continuing education you need. Not from me, not from TASB, might be a book you read, it could be anything. But the five things that the framework talks about are vision, structure, accountability, advocacy, and unity. And so you can tell me one of those broad categories, you can tell me school finance, you can tell me parental involvement. But at the end of our time together, right before we, we adjourn. I need to ask you, each one of you individually, and also as a team, which, what you need further continuing education in. So I gotta tell you that at the beginning of the hour, so you can be thinking about it. So when I say it at 10 minutes to, to eight, you won't go, what? And you can still go, what? But you know, I, I won't let you go until you do. But my question coming back is, what is it that you are going to do when all of this lifts? You know, what have you not been able to do that you are just, you just can't wait to do? And when all of COVID is lifted and all the restrictions are lifted, what is it that you're gonna enjoy doing?
Have a revival.
Okay.
Again, my grandparents and my parents.
Yes.
I think being able to see people in the community and have discussions and, you know, to fill us in on how they're seeing what's going on with the school district and what they're wanting and. You know, wants and needs and, and, you know. Fortunately, the last year, we haven't had many people complaining. That, that's been pretty nice. We only get a pod here. So it's been pretty nice, but I'm, I'm sure we're probably gonna get some negative things that we probably need to hear, you know, and deal with.
Constructive things.
Yeah, constructive. And I think that's, and that's the approach, you know, the, we've been through this, so now what do we need to do together, so.
Yes. Okay, who else? What are you gonna do when this is over?
Dr. G, return to community activities and school activities. I, I can't wait to hear the band play again or the choir sing or to hear the children and what they do in their, in their programs. Uh, to be with the, the parents and activities that go on. Uh, or to be, uh, say at the Lamp Lab Theater or at some concert at SFA. Those are, uh, everybody misses something about the community and the activity they do. And so I think that's gonna be a wonderful thing to return to and have that part of our community join together.
Yes. Who else?
As a boardman, I make sure that our vision stays as is and there is no compromise, any portion of it. And our buildings goes as is planned and our teachers are happy and hopefully they all stay.
Yep.
Yeah.
I would say that, I would say that I'm really looking forward to, um. You know, as, as much as I appreciate this technology and the fact that we can have meetings using this technology. I can't wait till we have an in-person meeting again. And I get to see all of you, as well as the principals and the, the parents and everybody together.
Amen. Who thought we'd ever say that? Who have we not heard from?
I didn't hear Coach Foss say amen.
I love it.
Are we missing GW?
That's who we're missing.
Yep, we sure are, completely.
Well, when he comes back, we will ask him that question.
Ms. Douglas?
Yes.
Uh, through the break, I received a text. I don't know who that person is. Because I don't, I didn't recognize the number. Let me see what this says, if I find it. Basically, it says they are very, very encouraged. We discussing the difficulties that we would have and how to deal with it. They're very impressed with the, our conversation that goes on.
Well, I echo that, cause I am always, always impressed with the conversations you have. Yeah, I am. And I wanted to say before the break, that you said that Dr. Trujillo has that it. You couldn't define that it. I think I now understand a bit of what that it is, so this has been good.
I'll tell you what it is. It's it.
I know how to spell it. I just don't know what it is. Okay, so, my question now is, and I'm gonna ask this alternately, but what do you need? What do you need from each other? What do you need to start doing? What do you need to continue to do? What do you need to stop doing to make? What do you need to stop doing to make this team successful? So, think about that for a minute, and what do you need? What will make this transition smoother, what'll make this transition? Yeah, I think that's probably what you want, smoother, more, more. Yeah, how do we build, build better? How do we get, take this adversity and build on it, and learn from it? So what do you need from each other?
Dr. G, improving mutual trust, growing mutual trust.
Yes.
I say, open and honest communication with each other. Not that we don't have it now, but I know that, you know, I mean, let's face it, we're great, but we're not the greatest. I mean, we still have some things that we can change with each other, the way we communicate with each other and stuff, you know. I'm a people person, and I'm a, you know, sociology and psychology. So it's, for me, I look at, I want people to feel okay what I say, and not feel like I rammed it down their throat, but just hear me and listen to what I say, and I'll listen to what you say. We don't have to always agree, and that's okay. And I think that's one of the good things that we've done in this board, because we've been able to not always agree, but we don't lose respect for each other. And I think that's the biggest thing, is to have that mutual, like Dr. Coram said, mutual respect for each other, because we need to have that. That's a must, that's a must.
And I wanna jump in for a second, because when I read those five things in the framework, the last one is unity, but I always have to say that unity is not unanimity. You are not going to agree on everything, because if the seven of you, if the eight of you all thought exactly the same way, we would only need one of you. It's the fact that you bring in different perspectives, that you hear from different parts of the community, that you have different experiences, is what makes your decisions so much better. Because if no one had said newspaper rack, goodness knows what we'd be doing, you know, to get those things in a, in a, in a safe way, where it rains or where it shines. So it does not require unanimity, so absolutely, thank you for bringing that up. Who next? What else do you need?
I think, I think we all come from different backgrounds, some teachers, some administrators, or some position. However, we all in the same boat, going the same direction. Know that we all have trust with each other, at least I know we trust each other, respect each other. I personally, I'm pretty open book, so people have accepted me as is. But I really don't think that it's anything that we have to polish or iron out. However, I like to say as is, and being actually present yourself regardless of what, not to bite your tongue at times. Open up and say what it needs to be done, at the same time, we come to a conclusion and follow our leader.
Yeah.
I'll tell you something that I was, that I think that we've shown that we were capable of this year, and I hope that will continue growing, and that is, when there was conflict or discord, we could sit down and openly discuss it as a team of one, and have that respect for one another, and work through that and come out on the other side of it without any resentment, or without keeping score, or, you know, moving past it and letting it go. And I think that's a tremendous, it's very unique.
Yes.
We lost the last part there. I can't hear.
Well, neither can the rest of us.
I can't, that's, thanks then.
Let me ask a question, are all of you on your computers?
I'm on my iPad.
iPad.
Okay.
iPad.
And I'm actually on my phone, because my internet, in the, where I live, is not very conducive to this. So I do it all from my phone, so if it turns out that your device, that your device doesn't work, you might try your phone, but go ahead.
All right. I'm not quite sure what you may have heard or not heard, I just, I feel really good that we were able to take some really difficult situations in these last 12 months. Some that we could have walked out of, very divided, but instead, we worked through those and came about stronger.
Yes. And I'm taking notes, and one of the things Dr. Trujillo talked about was having one vision. And several of you have said that repeatedly, having that one vision. Because when you have something to focus on, it makes the other things fall into place. That it wasn't, you know, do I like you, do I not like you? You legitimately have differences of opinion, because you're different people. But I heard you say you let go of it, and you move past it. Once a decision is made, you, you follow the leader, you follow who your leader is. So absolutely, what else do you need to continue this smooth transition?
I think it's gonna be really important that we listen very closely to Dr. T, and I think, I think more than just listen and hear, but pay really strong attention to what he's wanting to do, so that we can support. I think it's important that the community knows that, you know, we've agreed, or that we support him, and that we trust him. And so I think listening and making sure we know how to have his back, you know. I know Mr. Fraley talked about that, having, having our back and having his back, and it, you know, it's important that we be able to do that. So that communication is just key.
You know, I'm reminded, and one of the toughest things that I'm going through right now is, my beloved wife of 31 years, who we spent so much time with each other during this time of transition, she's not here with me, because we're in the middle of selling and packing, so she's at home, and I'm here. But I'm reminded, and I'm gonna, with an apology, because we're not married to each other, but the relationship we have is something that I equate to that. I love my wife with all my heart, but sometimes I don't like her. And it's the same way, and I can honestly tell you, that's 31 years of marriage, is that we know that sometimes we don't like each other, but we will never fall out of love for each other. And the key is, is, I, what I need and I would hope to continue to have, is I know that we're gonna do our darndest to get along and do an amazing job for the kids of Nacogdoches. And that's the key that we're gonna look at, is at the end, backwards by design, means that any decision that is made, or any conversation that we have, if we really launch it from the kid's perspective, from the individual kid, to a group of kids, to a grade level of kids, to a gender of kids, to a need of kids, and come from that perspective, then it will shed light on what we're trying to accomplish as a, as a team of one, to arrive to what's in the best interest. And I use that example with my wife, because I've never fallen out of love with her. And, but that also says that sometimes we're not gonna get along. I realize there's gonna be some teachers that are in this district, that there's gonna be a decision that's gonna be made, and I'm not gonna be the most favorite person. Same thing with maybe a principal, maybe a community person, but I want everybody to understand that the heart of this man, right here, is about kids. It's, that's where I come from. And I'm proud of the fact that this board saw that in myself as coming in, and I hope we don't lose sight of the fact that that's what we're about, is the kids. And we don't get caught up with the adult, or the circumstances. We wanna get ultimately arrived to what's in the best interest of, of our kids. That little, that little that's in the classroom, or that senior that's graduating stressing about GPA, or that eighth grader that just got into their first fight, and their parent is saying, "My kid's not a fighter", or "My kid never lies to me", or whatever the situation is there, so we can arrive to what really works. So that's, that's what, and I don't wanna get out there saying that I don't love my wife, I love her tremendously. I do, I think this board knows that. They were, I was so proud whenever they were able to meet her, and she's a great, great, and really completes who I am as an individual. And she'll soon be here with me, and I want everybody to know that I am living in Nacogdoches. I'm not renting, I'm not leasing, I am living. I'm buying a house, and I am living in this community, and I'm invested. Mr. Matoya said he arrived 20 years ago, well, I arrived 20 days ago. And I'm not going anywhere, so.
There's just something about that pine curtain, you just can't leave. Once you get on this side of it.
That's right.
And I think a lot of it has to do, you can't call for help.
You can't, you're sorry.
Ms. Douglas?
I love it, yes.
You know what I need?
What?
Need you to help us find a way to take public comment out of our meetings. That would make my day.
And it, but it wouldn't. It wouldn't. And I'm so glad you said that, because one of the questions I wanna address in this last few minutes that we have together is, how do you bring the community along? How do you, how do you keep the community's trust? And how do you keep them with you during this transition, not just going to a new superintendent, but being in COVID? So that was absolutely a perfect question, because how do you do that?
I don't, in Nacogdoches, I'm gonna go on a limb to say that it's virtually impossible. Because regardless to the positive strides, strides that our district make, our campuses make, our teachers make, our administrators, there's still a segment of this community that just, they wanna just beat us down. I mean, the harder we work, the more, I mean, we're very transparent, we're very honest, and each, each one of my peers will tell you, the courts on the board, that we have put everything in front of them. And there's still that segment that we just can't please. So, I don't know if ever we could get the entire community to, to trust, to follow, and to know that we are doing what's best for the kids. That's just my opinion.
Well, and, and I can tell you, because I travel all over the state, and that is true everywhere. Everybody is not always going to be on the same page. Everybody's not always going to appreciate everything that you do. Taylor Swift said haters gonna hate.
Yep.
But, I mean, that's, that's my great wisdom for you, but I will tell you that even in people's lack of appreciation, you can learn something. You know, from that, that public comment, you can learn, because if you don't know what people are thinking, you can't even try to address it. And the problem is, the people who are happy with you are not always gonna come and say, "Gosh, we're happy with you, we think you're perfect, we think you're doing everything right." But I can tell you, the times, as, as an attorney, the cases that I won were great, the cases that I lost taught me more. They caused me to grow more, they caused me to look at things differently, to examine things. So if, if your standard is, everybody has to be on one accord, well, we can wait for heaven. But right now, down here, it's not always like that. I mean, I love what Dr. Trujillo said, was, because, I mean, we have kids that we love, and sometimes we don't like them. And conversely, they love us, but sometimes they don't like us. So, no, I don't think the idea, and somebody actually made a comment, it was, it's not to kick their voices out, but it's how do we incorporate those and still not lose sight of our vision? Still not lose sight of the one team, still not lose sight of that. So thank you for sharing that, but yeah, haters gonna hate.
Yeah, that's my, that's my problem.
Well, thank, thank you Kay, you know, I feel strongly that, to me, public comment is such an opportune time, because we don't, while we see one perspective, we don't see all perspectives. And sometimes, hearing those comments helps shed light on a different direction that we would have never thought of. And I can think of times, since I've been on the board, that public comment has brought problems that we would have never known about, forward and shed light on them. So, I love you Rev, but I'm gonna have to respectfully disagree with you on that one.
And you don't know what you don't know. I mean, I can't tell you how many things in districts were brought to light, or, 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 light was shone, shined on them by the community. You know, and you can, you can be patting yourself on the back and feeling like everything you're doing is right, but if they don't, you know, if they don't have that opportunity. Yeah, so.
Ms. Douglas? I, I think Church Hill said, and it made a statement, I cannot say exactly what he said. However, he said, "Sometimes criticism is like an illness in a body you find for medication."
Okay. Okay.
You know, sometimes it is hard to hear that, that somebody's not happy with something that you're doing. But I think it's also one of those challenges. I know I was one of the people using public comment before I was elected, to try to concerns and things like that. I'm sorry? But it was just, it was an opportunity for me to try to express my concerns about things I didn't agree with at one point in time, and it also was what created sort of an energy for me to make a decision to even run for the school board. So it, you know, it has its place, and I think it, I think it brings value to us, but I get what you're saying, and sometimes being under that magnifying glass is hard. Having whole entire education on, on the public, being videoed, everybody listening, it's, it's hard. Trying to eat great, I don't know how to do that, and, and look sophisticated, but sometimes it's just hard, but, you know. And sometimes it would be nice if somebody got up there and said, "Good job", but that's our job, is to tell the people that they're doing a good job.
I do have to tell you that I was on a call with people from all over the state, and one of the things they talked about was, because of COVID, and because of, you know, Zooming and all of those things, more people are engaged in board meetings, because no longer do I have to, you know, leave home and, you know, sit in a room with everybody, leave my kids, I can do it from my phone. And they also said, and this was something I hadn't even thought of, that there were more, there was more parental participation in our meetings. You know, there, this new, this, this, this new, I hate to say new normal, but this reset is giving people opportunities to be involved and engaged. And that's why I start every session with, what are the good things that are happening? Because sometimes I get so focused on what's going wrong, that I don't even know what's going right in the district. Or if I only have a kid in kinder, then I don't know what's going on grade at the high school, and vice versa. So, part of what we're gonna talk about is, how do you get that, that information out there? So people can hold it up to the light and say, "Do I like this, do I not?", but how do we get that out there?
Okay.
Dr. G, I think we're doing it right now. There's 14 people on this, at this meeting right now, and there's eight of us, so we have stakeholders that have been here, and we just had a new stakeholder come on. So, this is part of what we're doing, is just enlarging our circle of communication, and having more effective communication with stakeholders. One of those persons that's a stakeholder will be joining us, Ms. Lee Beth App, in May. So she's not only a stakeholder, but she'll become a board member with us, and we welcome her in listening in, but getting to know us and our feelings and stuff. But there are, there are people who have come and gone, and that's gonna always be the, the, happening throughout the district, and the parent-teacher organizations, and all the different things that we do. And we all have our private things that we do about, this person goes to that meeting, and that one goes to the other. And every time we're with stakeholders, we have the opportunity to be an encouragement to them, and to be an educator to them, and remind them, we only have one leader that leads this district, and we are just the ones that help, help that leader forward. So, I think we have a great new opportunity to become better encouragers through this adversity. And we can encourage self-encouragement, you know, I really do wanna get up there and do this today. And then we encourage one another, encourage our new superintendent, Dr. Trujillo, encourage our teachers, administrators, our shareholders, parents, kids. We, we have the chance to do it, we just need to do it.
I would just add that we have the opportunity I, I would just add that we have the opportunity to talk about the vision and to talk about the good things that NISD is doing when we, when we maneuver and, and, and mingle within the community. We, we can talk about, if this is what we're doing, this is what the district is doing. Uh, this is what's going to be happening at this campus or this campus is, was awarded for this. And, you know, when we talk about it, I think it, it helps change the, maybe the perception.
I think you're right.
Kay, at the end of the day, at the end of the day, if each one of us has done what we think is right, what's in our hearts, and support our superintendent, then we've done everything we possibly can as board members. We're not ever going to satisfy everybody. We're not ever going to make the best decisions for everybody. But I firmly believe personally, I try to make the decisions that are the right decisions that affect our kids and our staff. And I live with that every day because if people don't want me to be a board member, then they can run against me and get me out. And I don't think that's wrong. I think if, if people are not happy with us as board members, that's why we have that opportunity to run against each other. But I can say that at the end of the day, I'm going to do what's right. And I'm going to support the superintendent because we brought him here and we need his support. And we need a backing of whatever we're going to do in this district. That's my view.
Well, and I, I probably said this to you before, but I have to say it again. What's best for children is not always what's best for parents. What's best for children is not always what's best for teachers or what's most comfortable. And I've, I've heard it said, and I believe this, if you're not making somebody mad, you're probably not doing anything. Because, I mean, and when I sat on the board, we would make decisions about dress code and people would say, I can't even go home because I'm going to get chewed out for making this decision. My kids aren't going to like this. So having people disagree with you isn't a bad sign. It isn't. It's part, it's part of, of, of being a leader. It's part of, you know, everybody doesn't jump on the bandwagon the minute it starts. Some people have to see it go around for a bit to go, you know what? That new guy might be okay, or that decision they made might be okay. So it's just human nature. Everybody's not an early adopter. So it's okay to have people not, not agree with everything.
You know, one thing I might add is just so that it's clear for, and I'm glad that Dr. G mentioned that there's, there's more than just the, the eight of us in here. That I, I, I hear the board say support and I want to make sure everybody understands, support does not mean rubber stamp.
Yes.
I do not want to be a rubber stamp superintendent. I do not expect to be a rubber stamp superintendent. And whenever I sat down in that meeting, I did not get the impression from any one of our board members that they're going to be a rubber stamp, uh, board member. I will tell you this, it's my job to make sure that every individual in this organization is, got information so that they can share with that individual that Reverend's talking about that's coming over and complaining. I promise you, they did not start with Reverend. They started somewhere back in the back somewhere. They started down the line somewhere. They started at school. They started with somebody. My role as superintendent is to make sure that we are informed so that we can communicate with our community. Whenever Lions Club is going on, I need to be informed so I can sit there and share the information and the good things that are going on. If I'm at Walmart and I'm shopping and mom is sitting there and she wants to know something, I need to be informed, be able to engage. But not only myself, I want to make sure that every staff member, the secretaries to our, our maintenance and operations to our, uh, everybody needs to know what is it that we're about? We're about kids. And be able to arrive with the questions that's there. And then when this board gets together and we make decisions, they're going to challenge me as their superintendent. I expect that and I want that because that's what's going to make us better. And, and I want them to be patient with, with the, the community folks that are out there because sometimes we're just going to agree that we disagree.
Yes.
That's just the nature of the way it happens. But if we always arrive to the fact that we're doing this in the best interest of our kids, to that one little kiddo, uh, for, uh, for, to be equitable and equity with everything that we're doing. Now, that's the one key that we're looking at. So just making sure that, uh, when, when Reverend mentions that, and I hear him, but the key is also, I also know that person. And that comes from years of being in administration, going from the classroom to an administrator, working at the district level. It always started somewhere else and nobody gave them the answer or gave them the time. And, uh, when somebody doesn't do that, then it creates more narrative and then it becomes more inflamed. And we need to make sure that we address it at the point that's there. That's why I'm excited about those cell phones. Those cell phones that were, were there, it allows them to call directly to the campus and, and ask a question uh, of what they might have so we can direct that in the campuses and get it to the principals. So that's, that's something there and I appreciate that. But I want to make sure it's loud and clear that I, when, when our community hears support, I don't want anybody understanding that as rubber stamping. I did not get that impression one bit, uh, that, that, uh, we're a rubber stamp. Matter of fact, they challenged me at some of the questions that were there. Uh, and how do you know this? Why do you know this? What's your plan to do something about this? Uh, so I, and I appreciate that. And, uh, so I said, I do, and they said, I do, uh, we're, we're married. So, uh, now, now we gotta do the work that's, that's provided in front of us and do amazing things. So I just want to make sure to clarify that, that, uh, we, we've got a tremendous board that has been, uh, charged with, uh, making sure that they're getting the best out of myself as a superintendent. Uh, and, and that's, that's what I'm going to give each and every one of these individuals and this community.
Boy, and you heard them say when they went to your former district, they, they tried everything they could to get somebody to tell them something.
Oh, yes, I heard, yes.
They're not leaving stones unturned. I like that. Okay, what else do we need from each other during this transition? We're in the home stretch.
I think we have all been faithful to our campaign promises, which was said, we're here for the best possible education for our kids, maintaining quality teachers, make sure facilities are up to par and functioning right. And, uh, people have total trust in what we do.
Yeah. And they will trust but verify.
You know, like you said, you can never please everyone. I always said, and I tell Mr., when I was filling out the form for a profile for superintendent, my last statement was, have or develop a little bit of a thick skin.
Yes. Yes.
And, and you know, in all actuality, you know, even with the public comments, in most instances, it's not generated or geared toward the board members. But it's the, the employees of the district who I know in many cases, they're doing their best, you know? Um, and so my heart goes out to them to have to encounter sometime harsh statements. Um, you know, for the large part, people email, email us as board members and they thank us and appreciate us for the time and the devotion and effort that we've given. And, uh, but again, that's what disturbs me, not that it was toward us, as board members, but many of, quite often, the negative comments from the floor are to district employees, uh, be it the superintendent or one of his workers, of, of persons that's in his cabinet. And, you know, I just, uh, my heart goes out to.
I saw something on, I think it was on Twitter that said that prior to COVID, people thought teachers just taught. And now they realize they teach and they counsel and they love and they nurse and they, and all of the things that they do. So my hope, my hope, when we come out of this is that we remember how desperately we miss school and miss teachers and miss cafeteria ladies and miss bus drivers and missed all of those folks so that we come back with some grace. That we come back and I, it may not last forever, but I, that's my hope is that, that we really do get a glimpse of all that, that, that has to be done to take care of our kids physically and mentally and emotionally. And, yeah. So I hear you. What else do we need to make that happen? And we're going to, we're going to end by me asking you about continuing ed, but we're going to go till then.
I concur with Mr. Matoya that we, we really need to let our teachers and, um, and, and, and all of the employees of the district know we appreciate them, uh, for the hard work. Let me specifically mention the, uh, social workers.
I do, I think, in all honesty, I think there's a little bit of social work in every one of our teachers, then our teachers aides and our cafeteria workers and our school board members. I think we all have a part in that. And, you know, it, it's important to me, but it's, I think we all have that. And that's why you're teachers and that's why we do what we do. But I think one of the biggest things that I want to see with this board to help each other is we want the community to see us being transparent. We need to continue to be transparent with each other. And with our new, with our new boss, that is, I think, the most important thing that we can do for each other going down the stretch here.
And I would echo that and transparency also means asking, what do you need from me?
Exactly.
Yeah, how are you doing and what do you need from me? Um, Stephen Covey said, seek first to understand, then to be understood. And so many times we do it the other way. This, this is how I feel. Why don't you understand? But I think when we come back with a little bit more grace, we're going to say, what do you need from me? How, how can I be of service? Because none of you would have run for the board, none of you would be on the board or be the superintendent if you didn't want to help folks. And part of it is how do we help each other on the board? How do we help our superintendent? How do we help our administrators? How do we help our parents? Because everybody's hurting. You know, tho- those obstacles and those challenges we talked about, everybody is feeling them in different ways. And so now it's, it's how are you feeling and how can I help?
You know, Kay, I think part of this change that we're, that we're finding is we've got parents who now understand what a teacher's experiencing, but we also have teachers who miss their children that they love on. So it's, it goes, it's kind of this thing now that we, we do, we have a whole new understanding of everything. You have a new understanding of what that, I mean, my, my granddaughter told my daughter, I don't want you for my teacher. I want my old teacher. She doesn't like me, but you're not, you're not as nice as Miss so and so. So, um, yeah, so there's a little bit of that. And I think you might have, but the change might be is that our parents might be eager to engage because they've experienced their children every day. And so, you know, they, maybe now that's kind of where we bridge a little bit of a gap from the, the community and the parent involvement to, because we've had parents who have always been involved in their children's learning. I was always on an email basis with my, my children's teachers because I wanted to know. My, when the kid would say, someone doesn't like me, I'd say, okay, well, I'm going to call her tomorrow. What's she going to tell me? And they'd say, no, it's okay. I got it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's okay. I got it. So, um, I think we might need more of that relationship building between teachers and parents. I think we need to appreciate our parents who have stepped up and who have made an effort to can pick up lessons, who have made an effort to download software, who have made an, an effort to call teachers. And, I mean, I think it goes, it goes both ways. I mean, both teachers, parents and, and hired have had to completely change everything they've ever known and taught, been taught. Being the daughter of a school teacher, I, I understand what that looked like in my home when my dad got home. And I get that. So I, I, I can only know what my daughter's going through with her children. So I guess maybe that's all. I don't know where that went, but.
No, I, I totally appreciate that. I, yeah, I, I, I think you're right.
I guess you know what my thing is going to be on that question again?
Uh.
Your engagement, community engagement. That's mine.
Okay, I will put that down. Okay, who else knows what they need more continuing ed on? And this is, nobody follows you around to make sure you did it. It's just what, what would make you a better board member or, or better superintendent? What, what's the primary thing you need? And you can give me more than one, but I need at least one. And I need one for the team as a whole.
Uh, I, Kay, I, for me personally, with all the years that I've put in working with the school district as a school social worker, the parental involvement is so critical to the education of our children. If the parents aren't invested in their kids' education, the kids aren't going to be invested in their education. And so for me, parental involvement gives them, give them the opportunities to be able to see their children learn, their children experience, be part of their education. You know, I think back about when we had a, a, called Mucha de Familia, we did a, uh, English class for our Spanish speaking parent. And our kids would sit downstairs with the social workers and students from SFA and we would mentor them and help them with their homework and feed them snacks while the parents learned English. And that part, I mean, I still know parents that are here in this community and tell me, thank God you guys had that program. It made me realize how difficult it is for my kids to learn if it's difficult for me to learn. So the parent parental involvement is, is something that I would, I mean, I continue. I think that's very critical. I speak to parents all the time about the importance of their involvement with their kids' education. It, it's important. It's important. Uh, especially in the Hispanic community because they don't, you know, they rather take a kid and put them to work because they need help at home than the kid to get the education. So, uh, that's a real strong one. That's a real strong.
I hear you. Okay, who else? What do you need more continuing education? And I, I need one for the team, so I need for you to tell me one for the team also.
Can we do, uh, all of the above?
We can.
We can. I don't think we ever stop learning.
I totally agree.
I hope we don't stop learning. And even if we thought we could, this has taught us that we can't. And I always tell people in East Texas, we just call that earth thing. All of the above is just earth thing.
It's hard to pick just one for real.
Well, it is. It is because they're, they're all front and center right now. Okay, now for those of you who can pick one thing, I need one thing for you personally.
I want to, excuse me, parental involvement as well because we have different kind of a group of people. They need to be all informed, understand the same language. Like Mr. Matoya said, we have a lot of Hispanic, we have a lot of Caucasian, we have some people that, uh, for lack of vocabulary, live on the other side of the railroad. They all need to be involved, not to exclude. And they have to understand they play a major role in success of not only students, in the community as well, the community that they're going to live in. Uh, just some people, they need to get involved rather than say, well, it's going to get done anyways. No, in this, they need to be involved, understand, then they can be an asset and helpful as well.
And maybe going forward, we try to figure out more ways to allow that to happen.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because, because the way we're using technology now, maybe that's another way. If I'm working two jobs, if I'm, you know, trying to put food on the table, how to, how to, what does involvement look like for me? Yeah, I hear you. Okay, who else?
Let me, and I don't know.
Excuse me, go ahead, Pastor.
No, go ahead, Mr. E. That's fine.
You, you may have already added this one. Of course, to me, it's so important and it's my building relationships. I don't know if we can get enough of how to do that. Uh, if we have some challenging situations sometime, how do we continue to build relationships? And then secondly, how do I represent the district in the community? Teach me how to be that positive person, represent the district in the community. I think Gabe gave a good example in this, uh, I think it was Gabe. Maybe it's one that's on the site, that maybe it's one of the, the person, individuals that we interviewed said, you know, if you meet Gabe in a grocery store and you come up with a concern, when you leave him, you're going to find all the positive things to say about the school district. And that was exciting to me to know that he will turn that around as a focus on students, the positive things that's taking place in the school district that we've already heard tonight. He started the, the meeting tonight with that, those positive things about NISD things are happening. I'm excited because when he goes to grocery store, I, I can tell in NACADOTCHES that, uh, when that happens, it's, it's going to be a positive response. And I like to know, how do we maintain that same type of thing? And how do we help Gabe? You know, Gabe, throughout the year, we need to ask you, what can we do to, uh, what, 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 what can we do to help you? Make sure our district stays just, you know, as we move forward.
Okay, who next? Thank you.
My, my challenge hasn't changed. And that is, I don't know exactly what category we want to put it in, but I want to. but I want to close evening gap. Um, as you guys know, every time they give the data, the African American students are always at the bottom. And you know, I just, I I'm struggling with, as a board member, what can I do to to help close that gap so that 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 kids are learning and achieving in 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 the same sphere and not such a big gap between their achievement levels? And um, that that have, that have always been what driven me as a board member.
That was exactly what I was trying to express. Their parents, they need to be involved, and they need to know they are very, very important, not only to as a human being, also as a person who leads and directs their students, that child. And allow us and yet participate, get involved and contribute and express ourselves as well, rather than sit back and, you know, make an excuse not to show up. That 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 is my point blank said. The parents, if you follow, I always said, if it drip and paint, you follow it, it ends up with source. That source sometimes at home. The parents need to get involved. I made a funny joke one time on my campaign. I said, they're catching, I mean, not without parents' involvement in success of students is like climbing a tree to catch a fish. That's if you remember.
Thank you, Coach.
Yes, sir.
Yes.
And parents need, I'm sorry, parents need to feel important, regardless of how they dress. A father who comes from work with their clothes worn, it's just as important that the person who came out of a front office of any corporation, they have to understand that as a human being, they are very important.
Father, you're right. They have to be valued.
Yes, we all want to be valued. Okay, who next?
Okay, Dr. G. Um, for me, improving communication. It's not just communication, but getting better at it and uh, targeting the different groups because we need to listen to all the different groups that we deal with. You know, we're we're really good more with our age group uh, as far as relating and understanding, but we need to uh, move around and know all the groups, including the students. We need to communicate with them. But uh, as far as for our group, I think it's unity because when glue is wet, it's still not glued. And um, if you have a a a loose shoelace on your on your tennis shoe, you can choose to stop and tighten it and make it work, or you can just let it be loose until it comes apart. And then maybe you don't, you don't have it like the condition it was because it's now dirty or stickers are on it or who knows? So uh, we need to take the unity that we have and build it to strengthen it to um, face the the challenges that we we have now and the ones we will have in the future or the opportunities we have, we have in the future.
Okay. Who else in the last? I'm letting you go in nine minutes, I promise. Doctor, Doctor Trujillo?
Well, I'm going to go, I'm going to go with what this board heard me say, and I have not deviated from it. We've lost too many great teachers. We've lost too many great kids. We've lost too many great individuals from Nacogdoches. So my my would be advocacy, the advocacy that I could bring about being that voice about why we are an amazing school district. Why you're a teacher and you're able to teach in this building and why we don't want to lose you as a teacher because we've invested too many of our resources training you up. And if you haven't been trained up, then what do we need to do to get you where you need to be? An advocate for our uh, lower performing uh, socioeconomic kiddos. An advocacy for the our parents que hablan mal español y no saben cómo comunicarse con nadie. An advocate for those individuals that we have in our community, an advocate for our custodial crew. One of the things that the nutrition services said whenever I was driving around, they said, please, don't forget about us. Do things for us. And I said, oh, you you guys are amazing. The key is is be that advocate for every piece of it. And then step out into the community and go be out there and ta- and talk about the amazing things that we're doing in Nacogdoches. Go up to Region Seven and be able to not sit in a room quiet. I've always told my administrators when I was working with them, if you're in a room quiet and not talking about things, why are you the leader? Because you should be out there talking about the amazing things you're doing. You shouldn't be the quietest person in the room. Uh, there's other people that can stay, go up there and do amazing things and say amazing things about what you're doing. And if I go to Austin, I promise you, they're not going to stop hearing about Nacogdoches. They're going to hear the amazing things they're doing at TASSB, at ASB, at Region Seven, even my own neighborhood back in Region Ten, uh, they're hearing it constantly. But I want to also know that none of that will be uh, replaced with my advocacy for the kids. From pre-K, from our early childhood kids to pre-K, the pre-K center we're developing and the support that those folks have to all the way to our graduating seniors and the support that we need to have with our uh, ELC and those uh, and those students that are there. So I my my big thing would be the advocacy. They're not, I don't think the board is hearing anything different from me.
Right.
That because when I spoke to them, I told them that we need to stop losing kids. We need to stop losing good teachers because you know what? Nacogdoches is a great place to work, a great place to be. And we're going to make sure that we can reset that and make sure everybody understands that we're going to support everything they need. The principals that we have are doing a dynamic job in what we need to have. Some of them need some support. Some of them need some uh, some areas that we're going to be working with to get them the support they need. And then also my team. I can't speak enough about the team that I've gotten to know uh, the the best and the most right now. Dr. Hill and Lisa and uh, and and Les, those those individual, Michael, those that group, we've been, everything that we've been doing is through conversations with the commissioner and figuring out what we're going to do. So I'm going to tell you, the advocacy is going to be the 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 piece that I'm talking about so that whenever I'm over at Walmart or over at Kroger's or I'm over at Lowe's now that we're able to talk it up and see what things are going on here in Nacogdoches. But then take it outside of the city as well so everybody knows, hey, you want to find a good place to live? Go back there behind your fine curtain. That's a great place to be at, so.
Hey, Doc?
Yes, sir.
We got one name.
What's that?
Holly.
Holly, yes.
Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah. I'm telling you. And you know what? Holly and I, we we, I could count on one hand the number of times we've physically seen each other. But boy, we've done a lot of texting and calling with each other. No, Holly is a tremendous, tremendous asset. Matter of fact, just so you all know, I took a tour over to the new, to that construction where we're putting everything in there. And they showed me my office and Holly's office. I said, I I need a door between Holly and myself. So uh, that way we can actually work, work and do the amazing things we need to do together. Yes, absolutely. Holly is is uh, is amazing, so.
She's the boss of all of us.
Oh, yes.
And I can say Holly has been texting and emailing me today to make sure this was going to go smoothly. I want to say thank you to Les for letting us be able to talk and see each other and bringing us back in when we clicked our way out. Um, I didn't, I can't, I've been saying Dr. Trujillo so much. When you said Gabe, I went Gabe. That's my son's name. And I went, oh, that Gabe. There's another one. So but we will be praying for your niece and your nephew who are in the hospital because, yeah, that's hard. We have four minutes. Does anybody else have anything else for the good of the group? Thank you, thank you, thank you for being here, for being engaged, for being attentive. I love seeing y'all. I can't wait to see you in person.
I want to thank you, Kay. You are always such a wonderful, yeah, thank you, Kay. It is my pleasure.
Again, I just want to, I just want to share this with everybody, again, that didn't get to see it. I made a a healing stick during this corona coronavirus. And it speaks to what we're trying to do in our district, I feel. Helping hand, unity and diversity and strength. And that's what we're, we need to pass that on to everybody else in the community. And please stay safe and and be careful.
I love that.
Thank you, thank you. Boy, we certainly want to thank Kay for coming and another wonderful outstanding workshop to help us as we move forward. And I'm certainly welcome my superintendent. Thank you, sir. Vision, like so exciting, exciting what about take place? Board members, any other comments if at this time before I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Thank you.
About a motion?
Thank you. I'm moving closer.
Thank you.
Who made the motion?
I heard a motion by Mr. Matoya, and this is Pam. I'll second it.
Thank you. Well, motion second to adjourn. All in favor, sign the line. Well, we're adjourned. Thank you, boy. See you Thursday evening.
Y'all Thursday.
See you on Thursday.